Good job. Joe, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, it was quiet. All right.
Are we um, are we jumping on the school first, do you think?
Uh, yes, that was my plan.
Yeah.
Let's see, Mickey's here, Greg, Kasumi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good day.
Chip, looks like connecting to audio, Chip, you still trying to connect? Wait for Jim. Very back. We have chips, audio, it's chip here. We lost them, Jim's on his way. And Tom is stuck at work. So he won't be here.
Sorry, Dave, finally.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks.
Think we're still missing Jim. I know Tom has a conflict. He's stuck at work. But we could probably get started and take care of some administrative things. Hopefully Jim will be right along. Anyone ready to go?
Yeah, you want to jump on the legal rules?
Yep, well, I'll call it to order first. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order seven oh four P M. Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals. Meeting for April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, roll call of members. Uh, Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Craig McIntosh.
Here.
Mickey Feely.
Here.
Jimmy Humphries.
Yeah.
Uh, and Dave Hatfield Chair is here. We expect Jim McBane shortly and uh, Tom Lucy, um, excused absence, uh, work related. Okay, with that, why don't we move to the legal notice? Joe, you will?
Yeah, uh, consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one three oh one seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight nine three, one five seven two eight three one eight, passcode three nine six five two eight. Please use, please only use dial in our computer and not hold as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the American with Disabilities Act in this this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or you, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town disability coordinator William Renault, town engineer at seven eight one two four six, six three zero eight as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. The advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements, remove an accessibility barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-three dash sixty-nine J C G Investments LLC application for determination and upfiling with respects respect to a continuation air continuation in this extension of a non-conforming use under Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to raise an existing single family dwelling and reconstruct a new single family dwelling. The property is shown on map fifteen lot possible zero twenty-two of the excesses map in is located at six Quarter Street, three twenty-three dash seventy, twenty-three dash seventy-one, twenty-three dash seventy-two, A D Realty Trust. Application for a special permit under Article six, section one ninety dash thirty-two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw seeking a special permit and slight plan approval in conjunction there with tool there with to allow a sixty unit garden apartment building with their combination of other uses including retail service establishment and or restaurant application for a special permit under Article seven, section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw seeking reductions of the requirements and or standards of off-street parking and loading. Application for a special permit under Article six, section one ninety dash thirty-two point one, seeking reductions and or alterations to the dimensional controls which are required on the section one ninety dash thirty-two D and table two, the table of dimensional requirements of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. The property is shown on map eighteen lot parcel sixteen B, six I and six J of the excesses map and is located at four sixty to four sixty-six and four seventy-two Main Street. Four twenty-three dash seventy-three, twenty-three S seventy-four, three thirty-five Washington Street LLC application for variance under Article thirteen, section one ninety dash A of the Wakefield zoning bylaw pertaining to signage requirements related to an existing automobile dealership. Application for a determination and upfiling with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming use uses on the Article nine, section one ninety dash fifty under Article, uh, under section one ninety dash fifty B of the Wakefield zoning bylaw are related to certain changes, extensions and all extensions or alterations to their purposes, including the construction of an addition onto the existing building. The property is shown as map two A and two B lot parcels forty-seven C, A B plus of the excesses map and is located at six ten through six fourteen North Avenue, four hundred years.
Okay, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, we received a couple of um, letters requesting continuances for some matters tonight. We'll take those up first as we always do in case anyone's here specifically for them. From Attorney Brian McGrail dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, uh, regarding Kigman Block LLC three sixty-nine to three seventy-one Main Street. Case numbers twenty-three dash fourteen through twenty-three dash seventeen. Requesting that we continue the matter to our April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three meeting, still in the process of working on revisions to the plans as requested by the board. Also confirming that the applicant has agreed to extend the time for the board to render and file any decisions through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, are they just looking to go to the next meeting?
April twenty-sixth.
Sixteenth, okay.
But also extend the public here or to render.
So I move that we accept their request to continue till April twenty-sixth and accept their uh, ability to render a decision till June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, uh, regular voting member. Hey, Jim McBane is here. Jim. Hi, welcome. Thank you. So, uh, we'll do regular voting members and Greg. Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that hearing will uh, be on our April twenty-sixth agenda. From Attorney Brian McGrail dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, uh, regarding Dana Rodriguez, three seventy-seven Main Street, Wakefield, Mass., case number twenty-three that is fifty-one. Requesting that we continue this matter to our May tenth hearing and that we're still in the process of reviewing options.
And we don't have to worry about the deadline for that.
Not this one, no.
Okay, I move that we uh, continue this to May tenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, same voting membership.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's huge and so if anyone's here for either of those hearings, uh, they will be uh, on our future agendas. So that leaves us with uh, four continued hearings, um, and the new ones you just heard read as part of the legal notice. Um, I think in the interest of uh, people who are uh, here for uh, probably a particular matter and other guests uh, from the town. Um, I'm going to suggest board members that we take up the uh, the Northeast Metro uh, Regional Vocation School District uh, application first again at one hundred Hemlock Road. Um, I believe I saw their team here. Um, but I think uh, I'd like to start with this one again. Um, cover new, new ground, any other questions? And proceed from there with the other continued hearings and um, Attorney Brian McGrail, I think, is representing the rest of the cases in this in support of uh, going, taking this one a bit out of order as we did last time. Okay, board members?
Sure.
All right, so with that, um, case twenty-three dash sixty, Northeast Metro Regional Vocational School District, one hundred Hemlock Road.
That, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Adam Brayard from Principal Ty for the applicant. Just want to do a quick sound check, make sure you can hear me, okay?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, just so, you know, I'll be, I'll be brief and certainly won't be as long as we were last uh, month. Um, when we met with this board on the twenty-second of um, of March, where we really broke down um, what the project was all about. Um, during that meeting, the board did ask for additional information by way of um, uh, additional um, specifics in the plans and then possibly any views um, that we could produce from um, uh, from Farm, Farm Street. And so on the fifth of um, April last week, we provided a additional package to the uh, to the board, which did consist of site plans as well as two um, two photos, uh, photographs that would simulate where the um, uh, where the um, school would be in, in relation to Farm Street as well as a second one that would be at the uh, um, where uh, Hemlock Street and the uh, security uh, area or security shack is, is located. We'll get into that. Um, what I do want to just point out is that from the time we met until, until we submitted those additional plans, we did review um, the uh, the, all of the parking and parking lots and the two that were in question that we uh, that were non-conforming, the two forty, forty parking spaces, parking lots that we were requesting the board to make a determination um, that 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 parking was uh, uh, or the, the uh, landscaping associated with that parking um, was not reasonable. We've been able to um, reconfigure those parking lots so that uh, those are each thirty-nine spaces and they no longer are required to conform to that um, landscaping um, provision in the, in the, in the uh, zoning bylaw. So that's my long-winded way of saying the two um, s- specific questions in front of this board are one um, to the building height and two um, with uh, respect to the width of the driveway and whether those two um, restrictions are unreasonable as they relate to this project. So that's, that's really the simple way to put it. Um, well, what I'd like to do is just share my screen real quick if that's okay. And maybe Carl and I can just run through. We really only have four slides. We're not going to get into every single uh, sheet of the site plan because I think there was about twenty or thirty sheets. But I want to review the uh, overall site plan and then go into the renderings that we provided.
Okay.
All right, so just want to make su- excuse me, sure uh, that everyone can see my um, um, my screen here.
We can.
Okay, great. Um, so really, I mean, Carl, you can jump in or um, Dave Warner, you can jump in if, if need be, but I'm going to blow this up and just really show you what we did. We just simply changed uh, the configuration of these two parking uh, areas to instead of being forty parking spaces to thirty-nine. Um, we wanted to keep the forty, but we also didn't want to create bigger space and, and um, take, take away from, take further away from the vegetation. So we were able to live with um, those two or uh, those two reduced parking spaces.
And there's landscaping on them. I mean, that's, that's what the requirement was, right?
Yeah, so well, the, the requirement in the bylaw states that any parking lots that are over forty, forty or over uh, parking spaces require five percent of uh, landscaping inside the, the parking spaces. So these are no longer forty, so they're just under that threshold.
Understood, but by taking one away each, it looks like there's bump outs with potential just extending surrounding.
Oh, yes, that's right, uh, Mr. Chair, correct. That's what we did. We replaced right, we, we, we shrunk the size and then, and then that's now landscaping.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, this next um, plan shows the locations of where the views that we took um, are and I want to go into the next two, two slides. So the first view is from Farm Street, the second view is from the guardhouse uh, at, at Hemlock Road, right as you get on to the uh, our, our property. So again, this first view is from uh, from Farm Street. I want to, I want to blow it up because um, it's, it's really kind of hard to see the um, uh, the superimposed uh, school, but that's, that's that's our um, that's what we have for the superimposed uh, school. Carl, can you just explain this just so everyone understands what we're doing here?
Sure, Adam. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Carl Franceschi again with the R A Architects. Um, we, we um, obviously, as you can see, took a photograph recently, um, uh, just uh, well, less than two weeks ago now from Farm Street, uh, across the street from uh, the school's property, about the center line of the school's frontage on, on Farm Street, looking towards the, the proposed um, uh, school. And then using our computer model of, of the building and, and the uh, contours of the site, um, use the same vantage point um, to create a view of uh, of this proposed school and uh, superimposed it with, with the photograph. Um, and all those trees in the foreground are all scheduled to remain. The, the entrance drive to the property is actually off to the right uh, of the um, uh, photo. Um, so this is in, in that sense, an accurate view of the building from, from the public uh, vantage point, you might say, from Farm Street. Um, and again, this is sort of a worst-case situation at this time of year. The leaves are still off the trees. There are some pine trees and some evergreens, but for the most part, you can see a lot of deciduous trees, but even with that, um, you can barely make out the um, the uh, profile of the building through the trunks of, of the trees. And then we did sort of the same logistics at the, the other sort of public side of the property, uh, the end of Hemlock Road, just at the property line where the guard shack is uh, on, on the school's property. Again, looking up to the proposed school, um, all the trees in the foreground again are scheduled to remain. This is actually where there's a, an existing uh, sort of walking trail, maybe an old logging road uh, that went up the hillside there that's um, in the foreground. But again, all of these trees are scheduled to remain. And again, you, you barely see the, the profile of the, of the school um, beyond.
So I'll just, I'll just go back up to the site plan here. So that, uh, Mr. Chair, that's really all we wanted to um, bring to the board's attention. Uh, I think this board certainly understands the, the relief that we're requesting. I, I don't think I need to go into that in, in any more detail than I did. I reviewed the um, the meeting last month and I, I think that um, uh, that, 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 that everyone here ha- has a a relatively good understanding of what we're looking to do and what the relief that we're seeking and what, what the, what we're asking, asking the board to uh, to make a determination on.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll open it up. Board members, any comments or questions? Nothing? Board members? You're good?
Doesn't show as much as I thought it would. So I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, can you just go to that? The, the, the chart that showed where the views were taken from? Yeah. So from the street to the school, what's that elevation change? From view one?
Uh, from Farm Street, there, there's about a thirty-foot rise from Farm Street to the uh, first floor of the building. Uh, on the guard shack side of the building, the guardhouse side, there's about a fifty-foot um, grade change up to the, up to the uh, first floor of the building.
Okay. So thirty foot from farm. So what we saw superimposed again, it was a little light, but the, the uh, that was the top of the school from that man at point thirty.
Yes, the, the roof line and you can barely make out the rounded portion there on the corner uh, as well, yes.
Okay.
Just saying, uh, in the middle of summer, that it's just, you probably won't see any of them.
Exactly, when the trees leaf out, um, we don't think you, you'd see anything there during the day, yeah.
So the, the methodology used for that is that, was there some sort of I don't know, I don't want to say scientific basis. Is that just a, a guess or how did you come to the super imposing at the level that it, that it did? I guess, because like, like Jim said, I thought you would see more.
Yeah, well, without getting too much detail.
Yeah, I don't need.
Construct, you know, computer models of our buildings. We can also construct computer models of the ground, the contours so that we know the elevation, where the views were taken relative to the elevation of our building. Um, we know the angle too. We actually checked it with a compass and, and so that the angle of the view lined up with the, the correct, you know, uh, compass angle, the, and then or vertically too, you know, the camera was aimed at a, at a certain angle that, that matched the, the angle and the computer view. Um, and then, you know, from the site plans, you can see here um, uh, where the, where the school is, where the school's parking lot is and, and basically all of the land between the parking lot and Farm And and basically all of the land between the parking lot and Farm Street there is all um, you know, existing to remain. So we didn't have to even, you know, simulate tree removal. Or or anything like that, because all those trees are scheduled to remain. It's uh there's a wetland there at the bottom near Farm Street and so forth. And our work limit line is very close to our new driveway and very close to the parking lot. And similarly, on view number two, a- all those trees are scheduled to remain as well. So. Again, it was relatively easy to superimpose in the sense that all of the trees in the photograph would remain in the foreground. And the school would be in in the background.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, um. So since the last meeting, um there's also been uh some discussion. Um between myself, town council, uh Bill Renault and I uh have also chatted. Um about some of the other work that's going on with other town boards and and process and uh. And I know Bill's on tonight. Um. But again, we just want to get clarification because of how. Um how this case, how this application was brought to this board and what the purview was of this board, what the discretion was. Uh for us to review this plan. And although it was brought to us by an appeal of the building permit, uh building inspector's denial of a building permit. Uh because the town does not have any bylaws for handling this situation and 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 um specifying any sort of um. Special permit application or requirements or site plan review, that type of thing, that would be the normal course uh for for projects. Um even though it it came in that way. Um and the Dover Amendment does apply. There is still uh some discretion that this board has to do a site plan review. And look at those aspects um besides just the two that are being called out, right? I mean, potentially. The bulk and height of structures and open space and physical layout and adequacy of parking and traffic and. Those aspects are totally within our purview, within reasonable regulations, right? Given the nature of this being an educational use, right? And I I know uh from um. Other towns have enacted bylaws that that stipulate that and are consistent with forty eight, chapter three. And the Dover Amendment, but do permit towns to have site plan review. Much like we would look at any other application, board members. And look at the site plan, site civil, traffic, lighting, signage. We would want to talk about traffic and the traffic advisory committee, what their recommendations are for this site. Uh the engineering department's review of this site, conservation is still ongoing. We would always uh wait for that process to um to run its course. Um to make sure all the plans are final and anything that we render in form in terms of a decision. System um and reference the latest and final plans. And any conditions that might be requested or required by these other boards or departments. Right? So even though. Um Adam, you you know, uh as your team has stated multiple times. Um and tried to really limit the scope of what we're talking about here. Um I would I would argue that this board does have some discretion to look at other aspects of this project. And want to make sure that we've um. That the process has been um. Um, you know. Reviewed by all the other boards and to some completion, and we've got all our final plans. And that the board is able to ultimately perhaps render a decision and make the findings that you're requesting. But there could be conditions from this board or other departments as part of that. And so I it, you know, even though it sounds like there isn't that much more to review from your perspective. Um I I would ask the board members to please consider as um. I I sent in recent transmissions uh from town council and others. Um with this information that uh we do have some discretion here. And I would want to make sure, like, these other views we asked for. Um and anything else that we think is relevant. Um that we should. Um discuss that and get information from the other departments and take that into consideration. So. For example, we've heard from. Um, we just got the letter today, so I don't know if everyone's even seen it yet, but it is now in our file. From the um Tim Wilson, uh Bill Renault, you're on this, the DP Engineering Division, reviewed supplemental materials. Requested plans provided to the ZBA facilitate the review and they match the latest set of plans provided to the CONCOM. However, the applicants engineer niche is still making revisions to the drainage system and will be providing the engineering division. And CONCOM updated drainage plans. Plan set provided to the ZBA should be updated to reflect the changes and resubmit it. The engineering division recommends that the ZBA hold off on final approval until the CONCOM has approved the project. As there is potential for changes that would alter the plan set submitted to the ZBA. And there's some other comments that uh. From from their letter, but I just wanted to point out that. Comment in that request from the engineering department.
Mr. Chair, uh Adam Brilard, if if I may.
Yes.
So I I mean, I I I hear I hear what you're saying. I I I guess I'm just um. Having a a hard time understanding the the stretch between what our relief. What we're requesting the zoning board to do in connection with the project and the additional. Jurisdiction that um, Mr. Chair, that you've suggested that the board has. I I I I don't believe that that's the case. I think that our. Um, our request is for the board to make the determination. That based on this project and its use. That the height requirement and the driveway width are as referenced in the. Zoning bylaw under the residential districts are not reasonable and therefore not applicable to this uh application and to this project. And I don't see where the the site plan of that uh in any more detail that we've already talked about really comes into play.
Okay, well, I'm. I'm happy to have a discussion offline with you then and talk to town council, um Tom Mullen. I looking at a case law right now, Jewish Cemetery Association of Mass versus Board of Appeals in Wayland. August thirteenth, two thousand and ten, bottom line, in light of the above, I find that use is protected by the Dover Amendment. Maybe subject to plan review as long as such review is limited to reasonable regulations. So.
Mister Mister Chairman, uh if I might, uh this is Robert Schline. I'm a co-council with Adam here and I particularly have been looking at the Dover Amendment as it applies to this project. And and the whole point of the Dover Amendment, Mr. Chairman, is to exempt public projects like this, non. Pro- public or not-for-profit. Public education uh projects from zoning altogether. That's the point of the zoning amendment. It's exempted. Now, there's an add back. If something really stupid is going to happen, yes, you have power. If we wanted to put a fifteen-story building. You know, in the middle of town, I agree, we would not be able to do that. But 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 that's really the limit of your discretion for the record. You may disagree with me and we may have to continue this. In another forum, but for the record, we. Strongly disagree. And we're not even sure what your review would entail, i.e. If we were to go through a broader site plan review and we declined to make changes, would you deny it? I don't, I think that's exactly what the, excuse me, I think that's exactly what the Dover Amendment. Is to prevent you from doing, with all respect, prevent zoning boards from doing. This is a. A program that's been approved uh at the state level because it's needed publicly. It's the size it is because it's needed publicly. We've kept the footprint as short, as small as we can, which has led to the. The height being what it is, but it's still, as you see, underneath the tree line. And for us to start now with the kind of review that you are describing. Is, I think, totally contrary to what the intent of the Dover Amendment is. And also, I think, is contrary to what our discussions have been with town officials. Who suggested the route that we took to get to you, these via a a building code appeal.
Because that was the only viable way. There is no by- bylaw in our town statute that allows for a special permit application for this use. But other towns do have them. Other towns do have.
Other, you know, other towns may, but I wouldn't feel bad because I think relatively few do, honestly.
But it's just the path to get to this board. That's just the path to get to this board. Once it's before this board. I it's my understanding there is some discretion of this board. We can look at all these other aspects. If there are other open space, other. Other aspects of this project that were not um. Not in compliance with the zoning regulations, then they'd be on your list of things you'd be requesting relief. And it would be within our purview to look at them and question them. You know, so if it happens, there are only two that you're seeking relief for. Uh in the zoning district, but there could be others and that doesn't mean we can't look at them and say, well, okay, you meet that one, but. How about have you considered this other option or this other alternative or doing something different?
Um, Mr. Chairman, but for these two items that we've called out, this project is permitted as of right. And 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 that's what the Dover Amendment says. And. To go through the kind of review you're describing is exactly contrary to what. The Dover Amendment is 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 to provide. And so. You know, as I say, we reasonable minds can differ and maybe we need to continue this discussion elsewhere. But for the record, we strongly. Uh deny your supposition here. We don't think you have that jurisdiction.
Chip, I see your hands up.
Yeah, Dave, the the thing that I'm struggling with is is. Um, I'm not sure I agree or disagree with you. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't really want to either agree or disagree. Uh however. We're talking about the residential district and and the differences in the site plan review is not. Needed in a residential district. So I struggle with, you know, the fact saying that we.
I don't know who Megan is. I'm trying to mute Megan.
Yeah, no trouble.
Yeah.
Um, so so my my problem there is that. You know, we don't have the right to do site plan review in a residential district and and they're asking for. The differences in a residential district and we don't have site plan review. Um, I just don't think we need to make this more complicated than it is. I mean, that's what. Uh I think the Dover Amendment is the Dover Amendment for a reason. And if we find that the height is unreasonable. Or that they don't, then that's a different issue, or that expanding the width of the driveway does not make sense. Then that's a different issue, but I don't think we can do. I. Read all the stuff that you've been sending around and. I I struggle with it, to be honest with you.
Did we do a site plan review for the church? I I think we did. And it was originally just use and probably would fall into the same amendment, but we did. I'm not saying it was an issue when there was a lot of contentious back and forth on it, but I think we did.
Doesn't mean that I was right.
No, I'm saying it was within our discretion to do it.
I don't think it is. I respectfully disagree with you, Mr. Chair, so. I'll just lower my hand and sit quietly as this discussion continues.
Bill Renault, I see you on the call. Would you care to add any anything to this conversation?
Um, I can add a little bit. I mean, I I I think, you know, kind of, I think the way I'm hearing it here is is, you know. We wouldn't necessarily be looking to regulate the full site plan. I I think what it's about is making sure if there's. An issue that would require screening or something requiring. You know, the the, you know, the requirement of the roundabout, for example, those types of things, I think they need to be included. Um, obviously, I think that we need to understand before this board would render a decision that. You know, stormwater has been taken care of. There are no issues for rebutters, those types of things that actually impact the the community. And you know, I I read the statute um and town council did that says basically it's gonna, the the plan is going to be reviewed. Including open space and all these items. It's not just. The part portions that are that are um that are not compliant with our current bylaw. The process basically says that the 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 um the ZBA will have a hearing. See, that's what the process is, is what we're doing. I I don't think it's at this point, from what I've heard from the board, it's not very contentious of anything. Um, my only recommendation would be to make sure that. You know, the Conservation Commission has also weighed in and that they're comfortable with. The plan as is, and and I think that's consistent with my memo and. Um my understanding and my discussions with um with with Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, I mean, again, for example, board members, if we rendered a decision. Say the traffic advisory committee wants a roundabout and has other conditions for the site. Okay, hopefully they're on the plans, but. Normally, that there'd be conditions in a decision we make. That says you got to do X, Y, and Z in accordance with, you know, the TAC or the engineering department required X, Y, and Z. There'd be conditions in our decision. But if those processes are not done yet, then where do those conditions live? They might be in a letter, but normally that letter is to this board, which is holding the hearing, the public hearing. And they become the conditions in a decision that we would potentially render. So if we don't render that decision and we just vote on these two things and be done with it, what happens to the rest of the process that's going on?
I could just add one point. So you do have a memo from the from the traffic advisory committee. Um and you also have one from the disability commission with some recommended conditions. Those are included. Um, you have my letter at this point that is discussing really the requirement for that roundabout to be included. I mean, those are the critical ones from my perspective at this point, unless the board has something else at there that they'd like to um. That they would like to to, you know, opine on.
Okay, thanks, Bill. I see some other hands up. Julie Berry?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'm going to defer to my colleague, uh, Mr. Schline, but I'll leave my hand raised to come back, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Julie, I was going to defer to you, so, okay. You know, the reason, the the reason you're not examining open space, for example. Uh it or or parking for that matter is that is that. You know, to our surprise, the property otherwise, the project otherwise complies with zoning. That's what I meant before when I said it's as of right. The the use is exempt, the use is exempted from zoning. And but for these two uh dimensional items that we've identified. The project complies even with the single-family residence requirements, because it is a big lot. It does have a lot of setback. And I, for the record, again, would eject to starting down some path of very general site plan review. Uh, we've been through, we've been through the site plan to uh to a great degree with the Conservation Commission. And uh. The the and the layout complies with zoning, but for these two items. Which we've asked you for uh to determine are not reasonable to apply to this project, given all the other aspects of the project. Thank you.
Okay, well. Again, and I'm looking directly at the Dover Amendment, right? The ordinance shall not, no bylaw shall prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land for educational purposes. However, that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height. Of structures and determining yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. It doesn't say anything about by right. It just says we can't regulate or restrict, but we can reasonably regulate. Those aspects of the project, right? The discretion to look at those things. Is that not a fair statement, looking at the Dover Amendment?
It's not quite right, Mr. Chairman, because. Because we do otherwise comply with those aspects, even of your zoning code. You can't through site plan review, with all respect, you can't require parking that's greater than the, in any, in any project. You can't through site plan review require parking that's greater than the zoning bylaw requires. You can't require uh any aspect of the project to do more, I respectfully suggest. Than the zoning, than the zoning bylaw requires. So what we're saying to you is you're, I'm sure, I know you read the zoning, the Dover Amendment correctly there. But what I'm saying to you is that in this particular project, where we otherwise already comply with the zoning bylaw. That's kind of the end of the inquiry. It's only where we don't comply. Because if we if we complied with those two items, with all respect, I don't think we'd be before you at all. I don't think we'd be required to be. That's. Hmm, that's the end of my statement.
Okay. So I still see hands up. I don't know. Does somebody actually have something else to add, Julie? If not.
I do. Have something, I have something to add, and I also see Mr. McIntosh uh has his hand raised, so I'll try to be brief. Um. The the authority for you derives under the Dover Amendment because you don't have a bylaw. Other towns may have bylaws, but you don't have a bylaw. The case that you read from, we don't know if there was a bylaw there. The church you're discussing, we don't know what the district did. The case that you read from, we don't know if there was a bylaw there. The church you're discussing, we don't know what the district is. But here, to be clear, as Mr. Schlein said. This project could have been built as a right. If it fell under the height restriction for a single-family use. We would have gone to the building inspector and he would have had to have issued a building permit. There wouldn't have been any review by your department required at all, with all due respect. This derives under the Dover Amendment, which restricts you to those aspects that are not in compliance and specifically refers to bulk and height. Requirements, and that's all there is here, particularly now that we've removed the two parking spaces. I understand with all due respect to Mr. Renaud, and we are grateful for all of Mr. Renaud's comments and guidance throughout this process. But there's no reason to wait for the Conservation Commission approval. Uh, before you make your decision, which which I will also suggest to you, a decision, you have a clock running on your decision. Unlike the Conservation Commission. So the Conservation Commission's issues right now are essentially related to stormwater, which is not within your purview. And related to some snow management and some other issues. With all due respect, you wouldn't have the right to review any of those things anyway, and if there are any changes to the plan, they have no impact to the height. Or the width of the roadway. You've received comments from the Traffic Advisory Committee. It's not within your purview, but you got them anyway. Same with the Disability Commission, same with everybody across the board has commented that you solicited comments from. The site plan set that you, the plans that you have is the most up to date. The, and particularly, there are not going to be any changes to the height of the roadway. So there isn't any reason for you to delay your decision, particularly as there is a clock running on its issuance, and and we all need to be mindful of that. But anything that comes out of the Conservation Commission, which by the way, told us, we need to get your approval first. And Mr. Renaud is aware of that. The Conservation Commission wanted us to come here, Town Council advised us. And if Town Council said the reason he advised you of this is because you don't have a bylaw. Well, you don't have a bylaw that gives you anything more than the authority you have under the Dover Amendment. And that bylaw, just like you don't have a bylaw to have a process. So we've crafted one for you, which you may end up having to use in your review of the Wakefield High School project. That we understand is under consideration and development right now. But unless you get town, your town to put a bylaw in, you are restricted in your jurisdiction and authority to review this project. By the Dover Amendment, full stop. Thank you for your time.
Greg? Do you wanna add?
Yeah, I guess first, since it's pointed out, we do have a a timeline, Ms. Berry, could you tell us what that date is? Instead of just leaving it hanging out there?
Sure, I believe it's May eighth.
So. And it's still open before at least Conservation Commission, I don't think anyone else, but at least Conservation Commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Or maybe open traffic, but whatever that there. Um. So, I mean, my suggestion, David, take it or leave it, I'm not trying to. You know, this isn't necessarily my view of of how. I would vote if I was a voting member on this, but. We have until May eighth. Instead of being spoken to by lawyers who are obviously advocating for their clients. We have direction, not direction, advice from Tom Mullen without the context of. Of this discussion. What's the harm in putting our lawyer and their lawyer together rather than? Missing the context in between. I understand that, you know, they're pushing for an absolute immediate decision right now without, but I I mean. Dave, if you feel like you need more information, I mean, I would wouldn't be comfortable going forward without actually having. You know, actual legal advice with all the context in front of you, in front of the lawyer giving the advice.
We would be happy to have that discussion with Town Council. We would welcome it. And and it's our discussions with Town Council that led us to this avenue today to be before you. There isn't any effort here to try to do anything that isn't above board. This project has been approved and reviewed on so many levels at this point. And there are millions of dollars that are being lost with every delay. This is a state project of a school. So we are asking, and while we understand that it's a difficult and complex decision, we are asking that once you have completed. What you're required to do, which is how you're protected in your decision-making. If you do what you are required to do, that's all you can do. Nobody expects anything more from you, but right now you don't have a bylaw that gives you. Anything more than what the Dover Amendment says, and and that's why we're here, because Town Council suggested that an appeal. An application for a building permit and appeal therefrom. Would be the process by which we would get the Dover Amendment question before you. It's not. An application like you would see in the typical sense. It's an appeal of a building permit denial.
So I understand that that he, that's how we got here from his advice, but like you said, we we can only do what we're required to do, and that's a different issue than how you got here. We need to understand from our own lawyers exactly what we are required to do.
Understood, and we are absolutely comfortable with that, with. This board seeking the advice that it needs to to make the decision it needs to uh as to its jurisdiction and its authority and what it's required to do.
Bill, your hand is up. Was that? Left over from before you wanted to chime in?
Yeah, I I I mean, I I think we're kind of going down, you know, a tangent here. I mean. You know, we understand, and I think the board understands that it's a very, there is a narrower review. If the board doesn't have any issues or anything that they would like to see differently. I'm not sure what that feedback is, but. Um, it then, I mean, I think all of this, we're just wasting time on this meeting. I mean, we can keep arguing and arguing, and and that doesn't really do anybody any good here. We're trying to get to an endgame, so I would say if the board here doesn't have any other concerns based on the information that's been provided. Then start discussing how you're gonna condition it, and that's fine. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to close right now and issue it. It means you can. Typically, what happens is that there's a discussion on conditions. And then that gets circulated around, right? And if there's a major change that ends up happening through conservation, that is a different, you know, light note or something. You would have the 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 um have the. The hearings process still open so that you can close it all at once, and it's it's nice and clean. I I'm not following why there's. Contention here. It's pretty straightforward, and the board's been, in my opinion. I I, you know, has has had minimal comments, so. You know, I I don't, with with all due respect to to the Metro Tech's attorneys, I just, I'm not. Understanding why we're drawing such hard lines on something when the commissions, uh the board has been very, very, uh, in my opinion, pretty. Reasonable with with all of this stuff. I think we're just trying to make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's here, because there's a lot of i's on this project. And we want to make sure we're following the correct processes, not the processes that you lay out, but the ones that are included within uh our attorney's. You know, memo that went to the board and to myself and to staff. That laid out that you the, you know, what you'd be able to do. And I think that that's, if you don't find that there's any. Need to do that review and you're comfortable with the project, that's okay, and then we're done, we're done, right? Isn't that how it works? So, you know, I think we'll wait, there's a lot of time being wasted here. Arguing about the Dover Amendment, raising voices for really no reason here, because everyone's working together, and we're trying to work together. Thanks.
Chip?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that in that we don't. Uh, condition. Appeals of the Building. Department, right? This is not a special permit that we can condition. This is an appeal of the denial from the building inspector on two counts. That's really what we're addressing. I think we're overstepping our our bounds. Many now. I would certainly say that I'm okay with the twenty-foot driveway as long as there's a roundabout at the end, because that's a. Way that happens. And that's, you know, the width is good because of how it is designed. And I'm okay with the height. Uh, given the exact design that's been presented. So like we have many other times. Uh, we've closed out cases prior to Concom and their final thing. If they. Do something that changes what. We have approved. Then the applicant has to come back. Right? If if Concom's decision. Makes it that. The road width changes, or we can, we can permit and we can approve. And override the denial based on the plans as presented to us this evening. If those plans change. Then they have to come back here. So I think we we cover all the bases of making sure that stormwater is taken care of with Concom and making sure that. Traffic advisory is dealt with. Uh, because if the plans change, we're approving based on the plans presented to us this evening. If the plans change, they gotta come back.
And and I think my point, if I could, Mr. Chair, just quickly, because that is basically the reason why I was suggesting that you wait until at least conservation is close. And that you're, they're in the home stretch. And that's so that you don't have to come back. That's the, that was my my logic. So I I mean, I agree with with um. Mr. Tarbell on this one. Just, I think we have different approaches on how to get to the finish line as all.
Yeah, I just want to be to the finish line tonight and not have him come back unless something has changed. Because we've already, in my opinion, wasted hours of discussion and time. On something that is, although complicated and a very good discussion. I'm I'm just. I think we've got ourselves covered many different ways.
Agreed.
Yeah, Chip, I would actually chime in. Like I said earlier, wasn't my actual view. I, my view would would. Be the same as yours. On the other hand, if anybody feels, I don't, there's no rush to actually close it tonight. If anybody feels like we're not doing what we're required to do, then why not get a view of our own lawyers with all the context? You know, in hand rather than just just plowing forward because we feel like we need to, or someone's telling us we should.
No, I, yeah, I'm fine either. I'm really fine either way. I'm just okay to go ahead tonight. I'm not plowing ahead. I feel like we've vetted it well.
Good. I mean, to keep in mind, Nolan did say that you are available, you are able to. To provide, you know, a reasonable conditions, so that is something you have in your toolbox tonight.
But but that that's yet another question, because we can't condition an appeal of. The building inspector, so that.
Yeah, but the Dover Amendment also talks about going and having a hearing before you. And this is what the hearing is. So it's, all of this is gray, to be honest.
But that that just goes exactly to my point to talking to Tom Mullen.
Yeah, I think that's something that could easily be discussed with him. Definitely.
Okay. And that's, and that's where I'm coming down. Well, um, Adam, I see your hands up. And that's where I'm coming down. Not that I want to rush into anything, not that I want to unnecessarily delay anything. I was just pointing out that. I think what we, the time we spent last meeting, the questions that were asked. We we felt like we needed a little more info, some of us did anyway. And so we got that tonight, but in the in the interim, there were some offline discussions. And I just wanted to make sure we're doing our due diligence, not that we're unnecessarily delaying anything. Um, but they're just, we do our due diligence, hold these public hearings, cover what we're supposed to. And if there are, if there is an ability to condition things that we, we've captured those conditions. Um, before we take on any vote on anything, so. Um, so I'd be inclined to continue for two weeks. Have that offline discussion with Mr. Mullen and these and the attorneys for the um, for the school, for the applicant. And and just come back, and it might be a fifteen-minute discussion at the next meeting to close this thing out. Who, you know, that's that's my, that's my thought.
Hopefully four minutes.
Well, intended.
I know, I'm only.
But we gotta read, but it's, yeah, it, I mean, we've now gone forty-five minutes, um, and and I'd like to put a bow on it, but um, but. Um, does anyone else have anyone, anything to add?
Mr. Chair, do you want to have at least some mechanism, if there are conditions that can be done to work on that in the interim and then bring it back to the board, maybe? At the next meeting so that we're not losing time and you can close an issue at the same meeting ideally?
Yeah, someone's got some background there.
Yeah, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be shocked if we're allowed to condition a denial of the building inspector, because. It's not a special permit, so, but.
I hear you.
Whatever people want to do.
And Mr. Chair, just to jump in, Adam Brayler here, the. The plans are the the plans, those are the latest and greatest. Whatever happens at Conservation, we don't anticipate any changes to the to the plans. I don't think that. Um, the recommendation to wait to see what the. What Conservation Commission does is 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 um, is really applicable or relevant here.
Dave, Dave, I would suggest you take the route you've already proposed, which is get the attorneys and yourself in a room. And and basically pose the question, let's get. Counsel basically, Town Council basically get away in here for us. And and clear this stuff entirely.
Okay.
As to whether we can pose conditions or not, that's really the, that's really the question I have.
His memo to us did say we could. So I asked for that prior to them appealing. But we can get clarification from him for sure.
Yeah, I mean, we we got a, we got a town attorney, we should be using him basically, which they've already said. They've talked to town attorney, but more stuff has shown up. Let's just clear the deck. Come back next time, and as Chip says, four minutes and we're closed. So let's just clear the deck. And and close this meeting.
Yeah, and in the interim too, we've got to, we've got to get a handle on, again, what those potential, assuming we can condition it, what they would be. Right? So normally an applicant would present those conditions to us and we would review them. Um, but again. We might have to collaborate on that one just to get uh the things that we would agree to um on paper.
So Dave, I I make a motion that we allow you. In as Chair of the ZBA. To have the meeting with the attorneys and if. So you're willing. That if it is determined that there can be conditions to work with the uh. Representative town departments to create those conditions to present to us before next meeting, so we can review.
Okay, I don't know. That needed to be a motion, but I think you just made one.
Well, I think when we uh, when we ask somebody whether we allow somebody to, like Jim, to do the architecture review or whatever.
True.
We usually do make a motion to do it.
Okay. You're right. All right.
Not very often.
So there's a motion on the floor. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, all right, uh, voting membership?
Yes.
Joe? Joe?
Yes.
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I will, yes, okay, fine. Um, so I am going to um. Um, because this is a public hearing, I am going to open up to the public, and I would ask that we limit the discussion and any questions. To the information you've heard tonight and nothing else. Because I will cut you off like I did last time.
And quicker.
And quick and more quickly. So if you have a comment or question around the process or the information heard tonight, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Jennifer Fanning. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Um, yeah, hi, Jennifer Fanning. I'm at Pecanwood Drive in Wakefield. Um, I may not be remembering accurately, but my impression from the last meeting was that one of the views was gonna be from. Uh, basically Farm Street near Hemlock, which is sort of the most expansive. Uh, view of the building with sort of the, you know, that forest uh with break heart behind it. Um, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but to me, that seems like the view that would be sort of most impacted to the public.
Yeah, I think that was discussed as well, but uh, given the other. Elevations, I know, would would, again, the school. Did you guys run that one as well from Farm Street at the bottom of Hemlock? Would would the school be seen even at that distance?
The guard shack's even closer.
Right, right, and you just see the top of the school, right, or or the first top half of it or something, whatever it was.
Right. We we did not look at it from, mean, from Wakefield High School um intersection of Hemlock and Farm?
Yeah, right.
No. Uh, we 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 did not, but I I feel pretty confident that given the view from. Much, much, much closer at the guard shack, there there would not be any of the buildings seen.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Fanning? Okay, any other hands up? Seeing no other hands, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening, so um. Would welcome a motion to continue to the next hearing.
Move that we continue this to the April twenty-sixth meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Same voting membership?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
When I vote yes. Um, all right, thank you. Uh, I'll get with um. When I vote yes. Um, all right, thank you. Uh, I'll get with um. The uh, the team offline, we'll set up a meeting with Tom Mullin and um. And we'll um, we'll plan to reconvene in two weeks.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the top of the agenda. Continued hearings. Twenty-three dash thirty-nine, forty, forty-one and forty-two, New Creek LLC at ten Broadway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, you and to members of the board.
Good evening, Brian.
Uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant, uh, New Creek LLC. Uh, with me tonight is uh, Donnie Lowe uh, on the Zoom, also John Ogrin, our site civil engineer. Uh, and uh, James Emmanuel, who who is our um. Who is our uh, project uh, landscape architect um, on this uh, development. Um, I guess the first thing to inform the board, we're still working on the architectural. Uh, we had another meeting with Mr. McBane. He wants some revisions to one side of the building, which we're working on, will be hopefully prepared to present those. Uh, at the next meeting. Um, but in the interim, what we wanted to talk tonight was um, we have a revised site plan. As you know, we had a. Significant reduction in units, uh, increased in parking. Um, increase in open area, open space, um, green space landscaping. Um, we were able to get that by um, trimming back the building. Which we talked a little bit on our architectural review at the last meeting. Uh, but the board did not have an opportunity to see the revised site plan, so. Um, once I finish, John uh, Ogrin is going to start by kind of walking you through that. And then we're going to introduce the landscaping. I think what you're going to see here. Is that um, what's happening with this site as a whole compared to what's there now. And John, can you um, are you there, John?
Yep.
Can you bring up um, a couple of introductory photos for me?
I can.
Thank you. This is the, you know, the site which you guys have seen a couple of times, but I I really wanted to focus on this because. Um, I think what you're going to find and what we ask you to kind of um, hone in on is the fact that. Um, we're making this area a much more friendly walkable Wakefield. Um, this site, as you know, is just a sea of pavement. Um, it has in excess of a sixty foot curb cut. That uh, people pedestrians have to navigate that are coming from the other side of Broadway. From the neighborhoods over the tracks that are some of the children that walk down to the middle school or their parents. There's no sidewalk on the other side of the street. There's really no area for people to congregate at this intersection. Uh, before they cross over or maybe to meet parents that don't want to go all the way down to the school. Um, it's um, it's blighted. And um, we're going to bring, as we've said, and you'll see it tonight even more, some organization. Uh, in some um, aesthetic and visual improvements. Uh, to this area to make it much more pedestrian and walkable friendly. Uh, I think you'll find it to be dramatic. Uh, do you have another shot, John, or is that it? I think there's one more. Yeah, and then, you know, part of it is, part of what you're going to see in our landscaping layout and in John's plan. Is the is the um, kind of the uh, um. Public area of the project out front with the seating area that. Uh, my clients are welcome to the public um, to enter this area. Um, is kind of a congregation area, seating area. Um, really, you know, kind of creating, I think, a nice gateway heading into downtown compared to what's there now. Um, you know, we're going to, part of our project is to redo the sidewalks out front. You can see what's there now. It's a mishmash of. Of pavement and patch and and broken up concrete with that sixty foot curb cut. Um, and you know, I think, you know, just to kind of put your attention on what's here today, what you're going to see. With the presentations is John and James go through this. So with that said, John, if you could kind of maybe take over and show the board. Um, the impact on the site layout that the um, reduction in units. Has had and and how that's also impacted the parking on this, on the project. Please.
Thank you. Good evening, John Ogrin, Hayes Engineering. Um, so. I think the last version that the the. Boards saw was this version. This is with the smaller. Um, footprint for the building, small units, um, we meet the parking and we had reconfigured. Kind of this back area here, kind of consolidated the screen space over um, towards the lakeside. Um, since then, I took another look at. Uh, this area uh, in the middle, the parking and see if there wasn't some way to. Um, create some more green space in there. So. Taking a look at that, um, be able to find kind of a more efficient. Way to lay out the parking. This has the same number of parking spaces, so um, we meet the one and a half spaces. Per unit and um, what this did was really kind of opened up this area in here. Uh, this kind of triangular space um. To maybe, you know, utilize it and then and James Emmanuel will go a little deeper into. Um, how we're going to utilize that space, so. Um, little more efficient in the parking, less pavement. Uh, this this version is about fifteen hundred square feet.
Oh, yes.
This version is about fifteen hundred square feet. Um. Less or more um, open space um, than what was uh, initially presented to the board. Pretty much the remainder of this site, this triangle front, is that's all basically remain the same. So if James, you want to take it from here?
Yeah, sure, I can. Thanks, Sean. I can take over uh, at this point, so. Um, thanks for pulling up. That which I hope everyone can see the difference between the previous plan, which had the parking. Uh, much greater with islands and more pavement and now we've managed to. Uh, consolidate the parking a bit and provide some spaces uh, for amenities and and outdoor use on the site. So I think if I can share my screen, I'll pull up the landscape plan.
Could be able to.
Okay, let's see here. And hopefully everyone can see this now, so this is um.
Yes.
The same general layout that John had showed you um. And we've got the parking again consolidated the drive. And we really have a a series of um. Nicely programmed outdoor spaces with this. And the first one that I'm going to talk about is this. Space out on the north corner of the um. Kind of a plaza space and I'll zoom in here a little bit so we can get a closer look. This is the photograph that we showed at the beginning of the presentation. That was really just kind of a cracked concrete sidewalk. Um, with a big open parking space, parking lot. And what we're really looking to do here is create a um, space that's. Uh, a nice kind of gateway to the building, but also serves. As a as a public amenity in addition to the uh, a nice space for this residence as well too. So we've got a paved plaza area. Um, this would be a seat wall. And then these would be kind of low plantings all around it uh, with pathways. Coming in, no fencing or anything, cutting it off from the public, but but it's certainly. Open um, and a big transformation to what's there right now. As we look across the front, I just want to point out too, this was. Uh, you can kind of see in the background, that big area of pavement, the curb cut into the parking lot. And now we're putting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, ten trees in an area. Uh, where there are no trees and just pavement right now too. So I think that's going to be a a vast improvement. Uh, just along the street frontage, the streetscape as well. But this, I think, gives us a nice space. Um, space number one, call it uh, for people to gather. You know, sit sit uh, on the wall, have a cup of coffee or or just, you know, grab and go something. Uh, if there's a bus stop nearby, maybe a place to wait. Um, but a place that kind of addresses the public domain on this side of the building. Uh, that I think would will will serve very well. Um, both the the residents and and the public use. Another exciting uh, space that we got, based on the reconfiguration of the parking, now that we've got this kind of. Space adjacent to the building, the screen space. We have the opportunity to create. A nicely programmed amenity space. So this allows us. To again, get some greenery in there and maybe a paved space. Um, a shade element, outdoor seating. Uh, maybe some paving with tables and potentially outdoor cooking, grilling. Fire pit type application. So this is sort of an outdoor living space for um, for use. This space is south, southwest. And the nice thing about that is it will extend uh, the use of this. Um, probably by six weeks in the in the spring and fall, uh, given its orientation. Um, so I think it'd be, you know, a well-used space and something that's going to benefit the project as well too. Uh, when we look at other parts of the site. We've got this strip along the the MBTA. Property and our project. And we wanted to really figure out if there's a way that we can use some of the space and we. Had thought that it might be nice to have another outdoor seating area, so you know, the one in the front. Um, this amenity space over here and now this here. And also make use out of this space as a potential um. Dog, you know, kind of a dog park or dog run, where we would fence it in and put some artificial turf. And use that space uh, as a as a place where people could kind of come and quickly bring their dogs out. I know there's a dog park nearby, but it might be a nice, nice to have something very quick. Just to use this as an area to kind of just levelize, get a quick run um, of in the in an outdoor space. Do what they have to do and and then bring them, bring them back in with a few other amenities as well. Uh, you know, so like cornhole, some gaming along the site. So that's the way we would program this strip. The the key in programming of narrow space like this, as I see it anyways, is to kind of. Create an along narrow strips and a few more tightly proportioned spaces. So that instead of having one long, narrow run, which feels long and narrow, you've got. Um, a a space and then a transition and then another space and a transition and then another space. So I think it breaks it up in a way. That that deflects that feeling of a narrow passage and gives you distinct spaces in an area that doesn't have them. Um, otherwise.
And Jim, what's the width of that space? Just so for content?
About between fifteen and twenty feet.
Fifteen to twenty. Okay, thank you.
And. The last space that we looked at um, as an opportunity, we reconfigured the parking back here. It's a little bit different. Now we've um, gotten the ability to have this open space and we kind of. Look at this as sort of a a passive recreation space, so you have access. To a space that's a little bit off. Um, it might be more of a quiet green space, just someplace on the property to go for a walk. In this place, in this space, we've programmed um, again, seating, picking tables, sort of a pass passive use. Um, not not games or, you know, things like that, but something that's just like a green space. Where you might read a book or just be out under the shade of a tree or something. Um, so this would be space number four. I had envisioned, you know, maybe like a stone dust path to keep it low key. Uh, and again, all the trees around it and the uh, and the parking. Um, parked behind some landscaping. We would be able to access that uh, from the walkway here. And then we would have dense plantings near, uh, this is categorized as a wetland, so we would want to vegetate uh, all this area here as well too. This might be thought of as kind of like a, on a hot day, it might be a cool space. Compared to maybe this would be like a warmer space. Um, you know, with with the sun and so forth, unless you're under the shade. But I think we've got a variety of spaces. Uh, with this that we can, we can use and zoom out, you know, holistically again here, we've got, you know, the the front public is one. This um, amenity space would be two. The linear amenity space that's subdivided would be the third one. And then the fourth would be this open space, each with its own character, each of its own um, type of use and uh. You know, one that benefits the public and the others that are definitely going going to be uh, used by people who'd be living in this property. So I can leave this up uh, for now. I think, Brian, do we have anything else that we wanted to? Uh, present on this? Should I leave this up?
I gotta, I uh, no, I think it's a good time, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, if any of the board members have any uh, comment questions on this part of it. And then I just want to also update the board on the traffic advisory committee part of this uh, project.
Okay. Board members, Jim, I see your hand up. Chip, you're on mute.
Hey, great comment. Sorry about that. Um, I just, Jim, I I saw that you have a fence along one part of this. Um, is there, my clicker obviously doesn't help you. What are you doing with fencing? And how are you separating this from other properties? What are your thoughts on that?
So we've got a fence proposed along the MBTA line. You can kind of see this square symbol here is a fence.
Yeah.
See that? So I'm just gonna, don't get dizzy, but I'll follow that fence line would come along. Travel along, turn the corner. Come along this amenity space, along this edge. And then continue between this space and the and the parking and we would try to get some green space and shade trees along this fence line. Uh, which would continue up to about this corner here.
Okay, and what type of fence are you thinking?
Well, I think we're really want to do something that has, that's kind of opaque. Um, because we'll do some landscaping in front of it, but a lot of these views. I think we'd want to buffer, so. Um, we haven't landed on a material per se, but. Um, I would say that I would anticipate an opaque fence. That would um, be probably something in the six foot, six foot high range. Um, maybe with a lattice type copper of some kind, but I'm not sure about that.
So so my concern is that this becomes a. Closed in. You know, barrier. And I'm I'm not sure it needs to be. I I think if it was. Open, not real open, but either either vertical lattice or, you know, plank or something. That was different than your typical six foot high, good vinyl fence with a. Trellis top, you know, that that that's boring and been done a thousand times. Um, as much as you want to close off. The view to other people, I don't think you want, in my opinion, I don't think we want to see a solid wall. So I would just ask you to really think about that. Maybe you do want a solid wall, but. To me, I think it would be very closed in if you did that, and I think there's ways to do it. To hide what's behind it, but not to make it feel so much a barrier.
Okay, well, we can certainly consider that.
Yeah, I that's my humble opinion. And I haven't looked at tree sizes yet, but. Know know that the ones out by the road are going to be significant to start.
Right.
You already have that drilled down, I know.
And the note about everything being irrigated, I noticed.
That's right.
Okay, anything else at this time, Chip?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Cause for me, I see your hands up.
Um, I had a question on, uh, I couldn't remember if this is a mixed use project. If we're gonna have um, like a retail or the restaurant type of tenant on the first floor. And um, if so, are you anticipating to have some like tables and chair arrangement on the front? Plaza area?
I can answer that, um, Mr. Chair, if that's okay.
Yes.
Yeah, the proposal um, is to, it's it's residential, straight residential, no mixed component on this project.
Okay, yeah, so that was my question, if the front plaza should have any space for um, like a future tables and chairs. But if it's all residential, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Anything else at this time? Cause for me, you good?
I'm good.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair. Um, so. Uh, to double back on Chip's point, so the first floor, that's all parking, right?
Yes.
That little space that's going to be enclosed at five feet against the train tracks. Do we, do you have an elevation of that? Like what, what are they going to be looking at? Like just the parking? Is it open on that side? Could you walk from the parking lot underneath parking lot to that spot, or you have to like walk around the building?
There's no access from within the parking space out. From within the parking space out to this, so it would come out here. I believe there's a door along this side and then come.
Was that just like one long brick wall? Kind of thing with?
Um. It, it's. It's an articulated wall, but I don't have the elevation on hand, so.
I was just curious if we could take a look at that, like, cause like he was saying, it's gonna be, I, I, I don't know, I hear the. I hear Chip's point, not, you know, having that fence open, but then it's, what are you looking at? Train tracks, you know, but. Then you look to your left, you'll see, you know, a flat fence and you look to your right, you see a brick wall, is it? And is that, is that like a pinch point for like a security issue or is the, the cameras there? Is it, I don't know, is it a danger zone kind of thing? That's just things like. That pop into my head when I, it's a nice spot. I, I like the dog, dog section or like the, you know, the tables and chairs and cornhole, but. Is that, it's, I don't know, is it, is it gonna turn into like a, just an alleyway in a way? So it's just, you know, just a thought. Some, some of my concerns on that area. So I do like the landscape everywhere else. I think it's. It's a beautiful area.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Jim?
Jim, can you explain the grade difference on the, on the west side of the site? Cause it is on your lake between this site and that, it might help everybody understand what goes on here.
Yeah, and if I get it wrong, John can chime in too, but as, as we're over here, um, where, where my cursor is. We are about two feet below the adjacent property. So we're sitting lower. Um, so these, you can kind of faintly see the, the tracks and that's where the. Um, the lake is. And this is kind of where, you know, some construction equipment is typically stored. Our site is a little bit lower than that. So from. From this level, we really don't have views. Out. Beyond and, you know, in, into the vista, so to speak, uh, because we're set, we're set low. Uh, as we progress. To the north, northwest. It starts, starts to level out and I think at this point, we're roughly a foot and a half to maybe two feet. Higher than the adjacent property. So it, it comes to, we're being lower here and then we're a little bit higher there. We've got planting scheduled. Up to go all along this perimeter to kind of green that up. We've got trees. Provide canopy along that edge too, but that's just the general lay of the land as it relates to the adjacent uh, properties. Um, that you, that you're asking about. And those, again, this is all paved and of course, this is currently paved as well too. And we're looking to soften that with the, with the landscape buffering. Uh, but low here and higher there is, is the answer to your question on that.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Brian?
Okay, and John, can you go to the site plan again?
You know, you want the one that I had up before?
Yeah, do you have one, John, that kind of shows the front, like uh, the, the, the front uh. Broadway kind of going into the intersection of um. North Ave or no? Uh. Even an existing conditions plan, I don't know how far out we go on our plan. Yeah, that helps. So, so basically, and John, you can kind of show the area, shrink it down. I want to kind of go to the. So I, I just want to update the board where we are with traffic advisory. Um. Uh, as you know, we, we've been before traffic advisory, they concur. Um, that, and, and this was before we had the reduction in units, that there's going to be. A pretty significant reduction in traffic impact here. Uh, from what goes on with the gym. And now that's gotten even better and Scott Thornton is updating his uh, report to reflect that reduction in units. Um, but one of the things the traffic advisory committee. Asked us to look at and to spend some of our resources on, which we, which um, Donnie was uh. Gracious enough to do and John's in that area to see if there's a possibility uh, for the town uh, in the future. To create a left-hand turn lane if you, as you're coming over the tracks. Um, from Broadway. So if you're approaching our site and you're on the right, you're looking at our site on the right, heading to North Ave. As you know, at that intersection right now, there is no left-hand turn. It's not allowed. Um, and the town um, is looking, um, we've been, I had a meeting the other day again with Bill Renault. Is looking, the town is looking at the possibility of putting a traffic light there. Um, and um, in allowing left-hand turn, the only way that would work. Is if the calculations work. Um, for that traffic light to work with the other traffic lights at Main Street, which they asked Scott to look at for them. Scott determined that it would work. Uh, and then also if there was enough right-of-way in Broadway. To create three lanes, so two heading towards North Ave and one heading back towards Stoneham with the, the middle lane being a left-hand turn lane. Um, and um, it looks like that would work, cause that's something the town is looking at in the future. So. You know, when, we, we've got a meeting set up with Bill Renault on that. Um, that traffic light is a significant amount of money. It's certainly not something that our project could fund or could be required to fund based on where our traffic counts are. Um, but I'm sure, you know, that the town will require a contribution from us. For traffic mitigation, which Donnie recognizes is, is commonplace with projects of this nature. And the town, Bill Renault has asked us to, to help continue to cooperate because we've got survey teams out there. To help the town with surveys on that. Um, and, and, and we've agreed to work with them on that too. So that's kind of where we are with traffic advisory. I think it's kind of exciting for those possibilities because it could, it could really change. You know, this is kind of. This kind of goes to what, you know, Tom Lucy has said for quite a while that, you know, we've got a bottleneck down at Chestnut Street. Because there's only one way to uh, to get across the tracks and people, you know, that want to go to. Um, you know, the middle school have to go over Albion. This isn't a possibility. So. Um, you know, this project uh, creates its opportu- opportunity for this. Possibility to come sooner rather than later. And we will keep being informed and I'm sure. Uh, Bill Renault will also, and the traffic advisory committee will too, because we continue to work with them on that.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah. That sounds good.
And that's what we have. Um, we expect to be back with, um, you know, Jim wanted some um. New elevations on the, on the lakeside of the building, which we're working on with um, cube three. Um, and um, we hope to have those by the next meeting. Um, you know, and, and that's where we are, Mr. Chair, we're happy, you know, is there anything else? The board would like us to try to address by that meeting? You know, I think we need to look at lighting. I have that on my list that we'll try to take a look at that, just, you know, site lighting. Um, and, and how that might work.
I would like to just echo Joe's. Uh, comment on the elevation. As you start thinking about, you know, that drive, the parking lot underneath the building. And that fifteen-foot alley. Between fence and building, what, what that all becomes.
Yeah, you want more of a detail on that, Chip and Joe, right?
What, what are we talking about? A, a solid wall? Are we talking about? You know, screening? What is it? What is it? Right? And, and doesn't have to be next time. It just.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's gonna be, and by the way, horrible spot for cornhole. Jim doesn't throw, obviously.
Yeah. All right, so. We can, we can, Donnie, we can look at that a little bit more in detail, right?
Absolutely. Uh, it, it's not been programmed yet, so we're pretty open. It could be. Screening, could be brick. Um, we have a similar area actually at my office and. And we actually did play cornhole there. Uh. We had a competition for the whole office. Uh, and it turns out to be a nice space. It's uh, you know, fifteen feet is. Is, is.
It's not bad.
It's good. So uh, we can, we can look at it and, and we, we'll do everything possible. To avoid an alley, which we wouldn't want either, because we.
Yeah, I just, so I mean, I don't know whether your parking garage has to have venting, has to, you know, or is it an open parking? Underneath the building, you know, that, that often there's got to be ventilation.
Right.
All sorts of things. So it just, how, you know, I know that's not programmed yet, but as you do program it. What does that become? And what does that look like?
Right, that's, that's an important feature. It would be our, one of our selling features when we have uh.
Yeah, it's also, you know, the, the border of all your outside amenities. Hit. The part, uh, first floor parking garage.
Right.
So it's, what does that backdrop look like in the front? Pergola area, you know?
Right.
That, that's backed up too. Is there a door? Is there, you know? Who knows? But as you get going down further, it's important for me to understand what that really looks like.
Yep, that, that facade is very important, uh, both from a marketing standpoint and, and a view.
Yeah.
Area view. Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll open it up to public testimony at this time. If anyone has a comment or question about the uh, information that's been presented tonight. Please raise your hand in the uh, Zoom meeting. I see Noah. Noah, please state your full name and address for the record. Uh, Noah went away. Noah?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, um, good afternoon, Noah Thompson. I'm at six seventy uh, Main Street. Um, I just want to say I will pretty much be looking at this project for uh. Three days a week at least, for eight hours uh, out of my home office window. And I am uh, just incredibly supportive of um, the, the whole project. I think this is gonna go a long way towards. Helping um, eliminate the dead zone right now that I, that kind of exists between the little village kind of. For want of a better term, at the junction um, between here and downtown. Um, I, I guess there, I just have a, a few um, critiques, I guess, even though, again, I, I, I'm so excited for this. Um. The, the parking in the front along the Broadway frontage, I feel like that may be kind of. Re- replicating the mistakes we made as far as um. You know, that dead zone where you have the Walgreens and the McDonald's where there's this parking between the business. And the sidewalk, it leads to just bad, you know, street level pedestrian activation. Um, I, I know it's very constrained as far as um, how much space you have to, to get the uh, the needed parking. Um, for the units, but if there's any way to eliminate that, um, I, I think that would be very beneficial.
James, James, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Noah. This is Brian McGrail. James, could you bring up your um, landscape plan? Cause that might help Noah. When he's discussing this stuff with the board that he can refer to stuff. Would that help Noah?
Uh, yes, thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, the parking right along Broadway.
Okay.
I, I can speak to that a little bit. Um, so, so when we originally met with uh.
Donnie, hold on a second. Is that okay with you that Donnie replies? I, I just want to go through you.
Sure, just a thought. I appreciate that. Yes, please go ahead. The, your thought process.
So the uh, when we met with the technical review, uh, one of the comments. Were, where does an ambulance uh. Park when, when there's an emergency? Uh, uh, you know, much more often than. Fire truck access is ambulance access for apartment buildings. And then the day-to-day. You know, there's tons of Amazon UPS trucks showing up. Uh, Uber now, um, food delivery. So. That area is really, i- it's, it's a little bit of visitor parking. There's really access for all the services that are now. Commonplace and serve the building. So uh, that, that lot is fairly important and. You know, uh, the current property is, is just a tremendous field of parking and we're very sensitive to it. We don't like that, but. This, this particular lot is pretty crucial for building services.
Yeah. I, understood. Again, I, I think that this is a great project. Um, these are just little nitpicks of someone who uh, happens to live across the street. Um, yeah, I, I, I kind of, I deal with some of the stuff in, in my professional setting. So, so I definitely understand the constraints you have to deal with. But I think. Uh, another point too, is, as far as the, the, the master plan for the junction, I, I, I'm a little concerned with. One, if, if that's even still on the table, because I think that, that was prepared almost ten years ago at this point. Um, with the, the street realignments. Um, it, it, and please someone correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't seem like this would um, allow. Um, for some of those proposals, um. Especially where we have that. Wall along the, the alley, or if the street was ever placed there, where along the uh, the MBTA right-of-way. You know, there would be, even if that the structured parking was covered, you know, there's a, you know, a full wall there. That would be another, you know, dead zone. As far as street activation. And again, not, I'm not sure what really you can, you know, can do to fix that. Um, but I guess those are, those are my major concerns. But again, I, I think this is awesome. If it was up to me, I would probably add another five stories. So. We, we, we need the housing. We need uh, you know, a little bit more liveliness down in, in this part of uh, down in this part of town. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Noah. Anyone else? Seeing no hands with closer to public testimony for the evening. So Brian, two weeks.
Yeah, that will be fine, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to see where we are on dates on this. Uh, right now, we are extended. Uh, through June thirtieth, I think. So we're good.
Okay.
I move that we continue this to April twenty-sixth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim? Jim?
Yes.
No, there you are. And Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, uh, thanks for the update tonight, Brian and team. And we'll see you again in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did he say add another five stories? Did I hear that?
No, it did. We, we'll, we'll ignore that one.
Brian, you didn't hear that.
He had other great ideas though.
I, I'm actually gonna call him tomorrow.
I mean, I was exaggerating a little bit. The hous- the housing prices, I mean, I'm trying to buy a house here, you know, I mean, it's a nice rental, but I mean, oof, you know.
Okay, uh, moving right along. Next continued hearing, twenty-three dash forty-three through twenty-three dash fifty, Granite Family Trust LLC. At three fourteen, three thirty and three thirty-six Salem Street.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, uh, attorney, Brian McGrail here for Granite's uh, Family Trust LLC. Um, on three fourteen, three thirty, three thirty-six Salem Street. Um, with me tonight uh, is John Ogrin. Um, also, um, here is uh, Zim Andy Zaleski, who is our architect. Uh, and Jim, um, um, Jim Cook and Bill Mandel, who are the principals. Of the project are also in, uh, in attendance tonight. Um, so I want to report that um, this project has also been before TAC. We're continuing to work with Bill Renault. They asked us to work with Bill. Uh, because um, the timing on this uh, potential project couldn't be any better because they're, they're doing um, some realignment. Um, and re-intersection at um, at Salem and Lowell. Um, they're adjusting some crosswalks, they're redoing sidewalks. Um, we had a meeting with Bill Renault, our team did about four weeks ago. He's asked for certain contributions as far as crosswalk, crossing lights and et cetera, which we're. Um, anticipating he will ask as a condition of this project, which my clients are fine with some sidewalk work with him and cooperation, but. Um, I think um, he's pretty excited how this could work as far as being in sync with what. The town is planning out at that uh, intersection and you'll see more detail on that uh, as it evolves with him and with John Obrin. Um, we also pursuant to your request, uh, went back to the fire department, uh, to refresh your memory. Uh, you requested us to, to see if we could potentially re- reduce the drives going back there or eliminate some of the pavement in the back. Um, a- and asked us to speak with um, the, the fire department in that regard. Unfortunately, we can't. Um, they looked at it from their, from their need to be able to get a truck out back. To serve uh, especially the existing house way out back, to be able to turn around. Put out their extenders if they ever had to and, and, and so they can't do that. Um, so that's a little bit of the bad news. The, the good news is. Within that site layout, we've been able to push back. Um, the new single-family home to, to kind of the side of the lot as you were requested and John. Will get into um, some detail on that. And then we also have uh, what we um, to present what we think is an exciting um, landscaping plan because. The comment of the board was, well, if you can't do uh, anything with the pavement. Um, see what you can do as far as landscaping the heck out of the back there, um, which I think um, we submitted a landscape plan and that was done by Jim Emanuel. I think Jim had a leave, um, so we can present that on his behalf and take any comment. Um, but I think most importantly, with all that said, um, as you may recall, Jim McBane is your uh our board liaison on architecture. We've had numerous meetings with Jim. Um, and the focus on the meetings was the massing of the building and in particular the height of the building. Um, and you know, how to kind of get rid of the pitch on the roof to refresh your memory as you would uh seen before. We've worked with Jim uh quite a bit since we were last before you. Um, we think we have made some pretty significant uh progress in that regard, which we're gonna present to you and you'll hear from Jim. Um, we also, uh, John Ogrin has uh done a massing plan, which you asked for to kind of show what's going on in the neighborhood. So John took some heights and he can explain that to you, so we want to present that. Um, and lastly, uh, hot off the press, uh, it's not new information, but we had uh four professional renderings done of the architecture and the landscaping um uh which we got in today, which I'd like to show you. They're pretty quick and there there's no new information, but uh, that was Jim McBane's request, working through him is that we should do renderings of all sides and put the landscaping that's existing on abutting properties and on our property with those renderings. So the, you know, as we go through this on the architecture part of it, we're going to show that with you. So that's kind of where we are and where we, you know, want to talk about tonight. So tonight, we're gonna have John kind of show the site plan with the house back. Then we'll show the landscaping and then we'll get into the um uh architecture with the massing and the renderings, if that's okay, Mr. Chair. Okay. Great. John, could you uh take over the screen if you would on the kind of the new layout? I think I'm muted. Are you there?
Thank you. So, as Brian said, we did, we did have discussions with the fire department. Um, I did reconfigure this some uh this proposed driveway, um, the original one. Just to refresh your memory, single family house was here. Um, we had more of a T turnaround, did modify it some, um, but the the fire department still wanted to keep this twenty um twenty foot width in the the driveway and also incorporate this turnaround um in terms of getting back out. We did move this um single family home, the proposed single family home, kind of in the middle of the site. Um, we moved it back. Uh, which was kind of what the goal was. Um, they also, I believe that the board had mentioned in moving this back, they're talking about moving it maybe further back. Uh, I did plot up, locate kind of the existing structures that are here on the abutting properties, kind of show you that there are, this is a garage, um. This is kind of a garage slash, I I don't know, I'm not quite sure what's upstairs and that. And then there's basically a home here, so in terms of pushing it all the way back to, you know, much closer to this property line here, um, you start to be very close to um the existing uses and structures. And as far as the rest of it, um, layout remain the same. Brian, do you want to talk about the building heights now or?
No, we'll we'll save that. I want to go to the landscape plan if you can, John, just to kind of stay on the site. You have that? You want me to bring it up?
Um, I do not have that right here.
I do. So if you can stop, just go to it. So this will probably mean more than, you know, Chip could probably present this better than me, but um in any event, um, you can see that we have a lot of robust landscaping in the front of the building with there's a, there's a wall in the front of the building also that comes around. And then we've got uh some trees in the back and some some uh trees here and significant landscaping, because what the board had said was, you know, create a buffer, landscape back here and kind of buffer these houses out. So we we think we've accomplished that. Um, you you have the plan, you're gonna see it more in real form when we get to the renderings um at the end of uh at the end of the presentation. I'm not gonna present, I'm not gonna pretend to present uh what type of plants we have, because that will become embarrassing.
Can you at least zoom in on it though, Brian?
I can, I can, great.
There is a full plant list, Brian.
There is, yep. What area do you want, Greg? Is that what you want right about there?
Yeah, I just couldn't see any of it.
Oh, there you go.
Thanks.
Chip, you want to see the plant list or are you okay?
I'll check it later. The only thing I would say, Brian, is maybe in this area where there's some, again, my cursor.
Yeah.
A whole lot. But yeah, that area, you know, one of the things that I don't think we do enough is bring in big boulders. You know, bring in some natural stuff that, you know, we would that could create um height differential and, you know, uh, be really make it look almost natural through that area uh with some big rocks and stuff around that. This is a very manicured design. Um, I'm just wondering if it could be a lot more natural potentially. That's just a comment.
Alright.
We, I'm sure we got some where to go on that, but you know, Jim's very good at putting a lot of plants together, but you know, there may be some, i- if this goes forward, you know, there may be some great rocks in this foundation that's dug up somewhere and, you know, they could be used to be very natural in this space.
Yeah.
Why aren't we putting more landscape around the perimeter? And in the back at back sections and like and abutting properties, we're just leaving it there.
You mean back here, Jim?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not even sure what's there right now, but we're certainly not showing
Well, I think it's
sort of existing planting in those areas.
Yeah, I mean, that's a point well taken. I I I think, and I'm not sure, but we can look into that. That it's a lot of, it's a lot of, you know, green buffer area now.
I I think there's a lot of scrub junk.
Yeah.
It it probably needs to be cleaned up, could be lawn for that person to have an actual backyard.
Yeah.
Uh, and maybe some perm, I mean, I think you're focused on that. I think next time we should focus on you know, what's back around the single families.
John, do you have any insight on that, what's back there?
Yeah, um, it it is, it is fairly scrubby um vegetation back there. In existing conditions, there's kind of a, there's a wall, not along the property line, but there's a wall um kind of up in that corner. And there is a grade change, so just roughly what we're proposing, it goes from around elevation ninety-seven near the single family home that proposed, and then up into that back corner, it's almost elevation one oh two, so there is some grade change um from from the single family home up to the abutting properties.
Would it make some sense? Because we know that we've got a butter was, and maybe more behind concern with the water runoff, that we get enough planting, basically, could you absorb a lot of that?
I I think you might want to be careful, because that's like that single family home, that's not their land, right? So there's gonna be some kind of spot where you differ the two people's property, right? Because now someone's gonna be fighting over who's taking care of what in a way.
Now, we can, we can, I've dealt with that, you know, that's kind of
Because that guy's gonna play in the lawn and then the other guy goes, hey, I I mow that, that's not your, I mean, you have that.
We usually, you know, probably what we'll do, I've done this in other projects, we'll have a homeowners association, it will probably end up taking care of the whole site, everything.
I mean, they share, they share the driveways, so there's gotta be some sort of
Well, we put an HOA together. It's a good point, Joe, but I think we can, we can manage that.
Alright, yeah, there's something to think about.
Yeah, that will manicure it. I mean, John, do you have any thoughts on the uh on the drainage aspect of it with increased landscaping?
Um, well, we do have, it kind of behind that single family home, um, we do have the runoff that's coming from the parking behind um the multifamily. And there's a swale that runs around behind that that house out towards the rear of the the property. So um, that would have to be that would basically be a grass swale.
Well, I think the question is, do you think increased plantings can help the drainage or it doesn't matter because it's already impervious to it?
From a, from an engineering and and calculation at the same point, it really doesn't make much difference.
But I figured, but, okay. Okay, we can, we'll look at that area. Okay, can I move on, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just to keep it moving. So um, so I think um you know, I'm gonna throw you, Mr. Chair, since Jim McBane uh was involved. Jim, do you think it's best that we start with the with the um massing uh plan to kind of get a, get familiar with the heights? Is that a better place to start or do we do that afterwards?
Well, that's, that's good enough. Basically, we can move on to the rest.
John, do you want to share that? Or you want me to for you? Because I can
No, I can share that.
Okay.
You might want to zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out where is the best place to go. Um, so just overview, we we looked at, you know, surrounding
Well, I say, John, just, is I should say all in the black, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Our site is in the black lines, right?
Yeah, this, these, these are the three par- properties that are um part of the project. So in terms of what I did was um looked at each, each of these structures kind of took an average grade, you know, around the outside um and came up with basically how high above the ground um each of these properties were. And then I, we took a shot on the actual peak of whatever the roof was. Um, so this is the existing house in the rear of the properties. Um, just an example. This one's about thirty feet tall and the roof elevation is uh one twenty-four. Kind of moving around, this is the existing um lawn uh garden center. Um, that's about twenty-six feet tall. Uh, and it's that, the roof is at elevation one twenty-six, kind of consistent. Um, we go to the budding two family that is a part of this project. Um, again, twenty-six feet tall, that's almost, that elevation of that roof is about one thirty. And then abutting us um is another, I believe it's a two family. And that's about thirty-one feet tall and that roof elevation is about one thirty-one. Um, across the street, we have the the um gas station, it's not very tall. That's the roof elevation about one, one twenty-one. Then kind of across the street, Salem Street, um, twenty-four foot tall structure, elevation one twenty-three and a half. Uh, kind of diagonal from our property across Salem Street. Um, this structure is thirty-three feet tall. Roof elevation one thirty. Um. Abutting us on our side of Salem Street, twenty-three feet tall, one twenty-two. Um, the structure is kind of near that corner that we were talking about, that one again. Um, that's this one here, about twenty-eight feet tall, um, elevation one twenty-six. And then lastly, um, there's existing home, it's only about fifteen feet tall and the roof elevation is one thirteen point two. Now, all that doesn't mean much until, if you look at this in terms of our proposed, um a proposed building is gonna be forty-two point seven feet tall and the roof elevation is about one forty-one, almost one forty-one. So in terms of um kind of the abutting existing, it's not surprisingly, um we're obviously gonna be, the roof is gonna be higher, um, we have a taller building. But in terms of what's, just for reference, um to the existing single family, it's gonna be about seventeen feet taller. Um, there's a budding two family that's next to our site, um, that's gonna be, it's gonna be about roughly ten feet higher, um, the roof itself.
And John, where were we? Because we're gonna, they're gonna see the modifications that we've done. I think we were at like forty-nine feet and one forty-nine or something like that before.
Um.
Before we work with you.
Yeah, we were just, I think we were just under fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're close to fifty.
Yes, we've not, you know, from what you've, when you, what you're about to see, we've knocked off about eight feet.
Correct. So, you know, roughly ten plus feet higher than surrounding, um obviously, the elevation is gonna be higher than what's surrounding. But, you know, we're going, we have a four, basically essentially a four-story building and you know, everything around here is not that, quite that tall. Any questions about this or does it make sense?
Hey, sounds good. So, thank you for that. I want to get into the, uh, yeah, you would ask for that, Mr. Chair, we're gonna forget. And and um Andy, so you're up and I'm gonna bring up your uh plans, I think probably
I can bring them up on on my screen. You want me to do that?
You want to use the, are you gonna use the renderings, Andy?
Uh, I have the renderings and the plan set, so, yeah.
Okay, you can go ahead then. Yep.
Okay. Mouse works. Alright, this is the uh
We're not seeing
plan set.
We're not seeing
we uh most recently submitted. Did you see?
Not yet. Not seeing your screen, no.
Should be coming up.
No, it's not. Yeah, did you click the green button and click on what you want to bring up?
I did, uh-oh. Oh, I can share, I see. I gotta do one more thing. There we go. It was hidden behind the other screen.
Great, thanks, Andy.
Too many screens. Alright, here we go. Trying to bring this one up. Okay. I'll leave the meeting right now. Alright, what I've done is I've put the new uh, the new rendering on the screen. We will go to a a bigger version of this uh at the end, but I I think you can see how we've uh given the renderer the uh the landscape plan so that he actually used it as a guide to where he placed the pieces in the in the rendering. We've also picked up some of the surrounding trees, um, the the adjacent property. We actually, I mean, you talked about screening, we've actually got existing trees, I don't know what condition they're in, along the back edges of the property. Um, I can quickly go through, the plans have not changed much, um. I can point out in the garage where we're doing the porches toward the street, I can actually use those as like electrical closet and fire suppression closet and like, so that's really been good. And because I can do that, I've actually narrowed the foundation a bit, tightened it right up to the dimension of the parking. Um, so that actually improved the footprint, I believe. Um, the first floor, second floor, you can see how those porches on the front are now integrated into the units. Um, the two units, the middle share porch, the end units. Get a porch, I I think it's working real well. I kind of had this harebrained idea, but it it's it's working out a little bit. Um, the uppermost floor has changed a bit, it's pulled back from the street side and uh aligned over here a little bit more. Um, again, due to the change in the massing of the building, um really getting the the major mass toward the back of the building where it's not visible from the street. Um, the roof incorporates this flat area where we can put our mechanical equipment. Uh, it's actually in the rendering, although you can't see it, but it's there. Uh, it's actually in the rendering, although you can't see it, but it's there. Um, I I put it in the model before I gave it to the artist, so. Um, I think that's working out real well. Uh, as you can see, the front of the building uh has that townhouse look that we are developing and uh. Breaks it down into five individual facades. The differences in color, difference in texture. Differences in treatment, uh Jim actually asked me why these windows don't have shutters, but I I did that on purpose, so that gives a little different variety to the building. Um, you can see the elevator possibly peeking over. The top, we haven't really worked with the elevator people to figure out exactly how tall that has to be, that may be. Over aggressive, I I find in the elevators don't need as much overrun as as we used to think. Uh, so that could work out better. Uh, the ends of the building, we pulled those dormers back, you can see how the roof now is the major element here and the dormer is is a piece of it. At the previous design, the dormer came all the way out to the edge. Same way on the other end. Um, I do have a slightly higher roof in the back, you you don't have any view of that from the street. Um, but I think it gives the back a different character that is. Allowed me to do these little Dutch roofs, which I think are actually quite attractive, I like the scale, the elements. Again, you see the elevator tower that hasn't been engineered yet, I don't know exactly how tall it's gonna be, I I don't think it's be quite as tall as I show it. Um, the entrance of the building is here. And what I would like to do. Just bring up the render, I think the renderings are really showing the building well, this is from the street.
Blow that up, Andy, with the plus sign?
Uh, blow it up with the plus sign, oh, there it is, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, now you're a strike a little bit.
Might too much there, here we go. The wall and the the garden above the wall actually exists on the adjacent properties, we're not really introducing new element. To the neighborhood, this this is already a piece that that you see in that neighborhood. Um, it is designed, you know, we've got the parking under the buildings and outlook at the cars in an open parking lot, but. It does make the building a little taller, I think the planting is what we're doing to really. Further disguise the cars and. The cars seem to be the bane of our existence, we seem to live in a world populated by cars that. Sometimes lets people in, but. I I that is the reality we live with every day. Um, there is a stairway, we need a second means of egress, so I've actually made it a nice stairway coming out to the sidewalk. Um, you could ask, why is it not handicapped adapted? Well. Technically, under the handicap code, I do have full access from the other side of the building, this will be. Considered an emergency egress, so the handicap people need full access. But they don't necessarily need all the egress points, I think we're fine on the code. I think it's an attractive way to do it, we can, we can detail that stair even a little more than we're shown in the rendering. But um I think this view really shows how we present to the street as a as a more residential building and not a not a commercial building. This is the view of the back of the building. Does look more like an apartment building, but this is the only way you can see this is if you're. Literally on our site, you can see all the parking garage gets uh ventilation to the air. Um, and how you come in from the parking lot on that level and then we'll have access to the elevator, so everybody has access to both stairs. And elevators. Uh, on this side, the the decks are recessed as opposed to the. Extended porches that are on the street side, but. That keeps the building shallow, it gives us room for a park and gives us room for things to comfortably occur. This is just a a different view of the street side of the building, um. These trees are not anything we're proposing to plant, those are, those are there, those are along the property line, we have some real screening there. Um, the smaller pieces are the ones that we are proposing to bring in and you can see how we're really landscaping. The the front berm, the the wall and the landscaping, I think really. Give the the building a much more natural feel than. You can imagine what this would be like if it was just pavement out there, it would be a totally different look, but this brings some greenery, it brings some texture. And it. It takes that as a slope and not just a a tall wall, so. I think it's a beautiful element and uh the landscaping is is around with it.
Andy, you should stay there.
Yeah.
Just, you know, cuz I know you're gonna hear from Jim, but one of the things we talked about. Was that the stone on the wall, we talked about um facing the steps with that and the.
Yeah, yeah, I I, yeah, we missed it on the rendering, but that is the plan is to do this uh face of the stair with. With that same stone.
Yeah, and the side wall, right, on the uh foundation?
Um, I didn't know about that, but we.
Jim can pipe in on that, I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Cuz he's.
It's doable, sure.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and I'll just bring up the other view, come on. Computers are funny, go away, go away, I can't get to where I wanna get. Oh, boy, here we go. Overlap them, okay. Uh, this is more of an aerial view, um I I did this view for one reason is I've actually got. The mechanical equipment in the model. And uh you're not only not gonna see it from the street, but even even up a bit. Um, you're not gonna see it or hear it, so. I really like this type of building, I it gets mechanical equipment off the ground. And quite frankly, in my experience, uh. Sound is is a line of sight thing, if you can't see it. You really aren't gonna hear it and uh these units are not terribly noisy, they have very excellent sound ratings, but we do have. Well, we got twenty of them up there on the roof, um. This will make sure that the sound is directed up and not at our abutting neighbors. Um, and I do like this view, I think it shows off. The intense landscaping, how that really can work and uh. As Brian pointed out, this this will also have the stone facing around the stair, that is our intent. Uh, anything else I should?
You talked about how, you, we talked about the dormers that Jim requested on the side, that you narrowed those down.
Yeah, you can see here how how it really reduces their bulk a lot by by pulling them back from the edge, definitely.
Okay, Jim, do you wanna add your thoughts? I see a couple of hands up, but.
Yeah, um, so, um. As Andy had presented sometime back, because because if you remember, this was pretty much a box. Looks like um a note, a a motel six or something like that, so this has become. More friendly in appearance to the neighborhood and unlike the. Um, apartment complexes that are down the street that we've already pre-approved, this this um fits more into the neighborhood. Yes, it's tall, uh we spent a lot of time basically talking about the ends of the building. Cuz those are the first things you see as you drive down the street. I had one concept, uh Andy had another, this to me is is acceptable is the. The concept that I was working on as well, so um this has made a huge leap. Basically, in in character in the neighborhood and I think it's appropriate for the character of this area. Um, and if you look at the street, basically, um particularly as you go away this into town. Um, you'll get more, you'll get more character like this as opposed to the opposite direction, which becomes more commercial, so. I think this is, this has worked out well, I think we need to move on to detailing and all the rest of the stuff that we normally deal with, but. As far as mass and even appearance, I think it's uh, it's a, it's a great change. So I'll leave it at that.
Alright, thank you, Jim.
Chip, I think your hand was up first.
Um, so I have, can you, um, so starting on this elevation um and rendering. Was there any thought given, even though this is quote unquote an emergency egress? Was there any thought of combining? The right and left uh on this one, that's the three units, first floor balcony slash decks. To be connected so they could all use the staircase, just one thought.
No.
Two, two would be the end unit. Uh, that can get out onto it, also having stairs off of that, even if it's just down into the grass area. Um, that would be my only thought here, possibly. And then can you go back to the render, to not the rendering, to the drawing of the parking garage?
Backside?
No, underneath. I'll play exactly what I'm concerned of the floor plan.
Yeah, here it is.
So I'm assuming those round circles are columns?
Yes.
So the column pretty much reduces the size of those parking spots significantly. Right, if you go, I know you've got a nine-foot spot, but if you go from the edge of the column over to your line. You've probably got seven and a half or eight feet. So the, I'm concerned about the actual space that people can park and it doesn't need to be answered tonight. But, you know, we've we've got other situations in town where people are saying they've got. Unusable space and whatnot, and although this meets the letter of the code, does it meet the. Requirement that people actually have to drive and park in this place, so just, I I ask you to look at that.
I I don't think the columns are actually gonna be that big, I mean, I put some circles on there, but. Uh, typically, it's a. It's about an inch.
But they're gonna be, they're gonna be, they're gonna be something. They're going to be something and they're going to reduce the the size of the space. And people have to park back up, get out of these spaces, I just wanna make sure that all these spaces are actually usable. Based on your construction.
We'll look at that.
Yes, please.
Yep.
So I think in another case, just to add to Chip's point, is that they might have been shown on a plan like this before us. And when they got built, those poles actually moved like halfway down the space and people couldn't, had trouble opening the car doors. Cuz it was like six, eight inches, ten inches into the space, so. Even if they were at the end, a- again, depending on the width, the diameter of the columns, it may be okay. It's just as Chip said, we should look at it, but at the end of the day, if those things shift up into the middle of the parking spaces on those lines. Now it's encroaching on the doorways, right, so it's just something to be mindful of.
All right, generally, these do stay there because I'm I'm trying to maintain a twenty-four-foot piece of steel across there. If I start moving them back, then my steel gets a lot heavier and bigger, so. There's really no.
It's fine as long as it's doable.
Yeah, yeah, there there's nothing.
We don't, and we don't have people parking on along the driveway. Because there are seven spaces in here that people can't park cars in.
Well, all the spaces are identical, so I don't know, if somebody has a big car, I guess they.
Except for call, what what size space are you going with?
Uh, nine feet.
Okay.
Twenty-seven feet on the columns, well, except for these two. Um, I mean.
Right, so just look at it, please.
When I go into Boston and park and stuff, this is what I see, I.
I don't know, it isn't, do you have any yellow from them on your front bumper?
I was just about to say the same thing, Chip, I have yellow down the side of my truck from Fenway. We're gonna, we're gonna look at it, we'll move on.
Okay, point taken, to your first question, Chip, um I I think Jim might have blurted out, no, on the stairways in the front.
Well, everybody has access to it through through a hallway, I mean.
No, I didn't say stairway, so that those units, see how, if you go to the unit to the right and to the left. Is there a way to connect that deck so that these people can come right out and go up and down the stairs, it just gives them.
Well, I'm not sure they would want strangers just walking on their porch, I've been.
No, but if I'm going over there, where you go through the locked door.
Yeah.
They can lock their doors too, I mean, I don't know, I just, it was a thought. It gives a more accessibility to the stairwell.
I I wouldn't do that because it changes the character in the front, which is supposed to look like a bunch of separate buildings. When you start to connect them, then you'll they start to look like a different building. And they already have access to that, they can just go out in the car. And walk to that stairway if they want to, I'm not sure how active that stairway is actually gonna become.
I think it's gonna be very active.
It could be.
I think if I'm going out for a walk, I'm going right out there to the sidewalk.
Sure.
Not going out the back of the building.
I mean, they're going across the street for pizza.
Perhaps.
I I didn't say that, but that's a good thing to think about, Jim. I do like slice.
Okay. Chip, anything else at this time?
No.
Okay, Jim.
And just back to my, when we get a manual again, to think about maybe a more natural planting between the. The houses in here.
Yep.
Uh, yes, thanks, uh, good job on the design, um and forgive me if we've talked about this in the past, but. On the building height, was there any discussion on doing underground parking and dropping this?
Yes, we did discuss it, but I, John, you should talk about the, I I asked the question. Uh, is it a groundwater issue? I think there are some reasons we can't do that.
Um. No, there's not, there's not necessarily a groundwater issue, uh. The the, it comes back to kind of the constraints we have as far as the zoning, you know, we're very limited as to where we can place this building and. Um, to come off of Salem Street and go, you know, basically go down into. Um, a parking garage, it's just. Um, there's no way that we can, we can do that, we're not gonna make up much ground. The other thing too is is. In the existing condition, that front side, the front part of um these lots. Shed out towards Salem Street, we start to go down into the ground, now we need to get that water somehow out. Which would and most likely be to the rear of the property, um and we just don't have that great difference to do that.
Alright, yeah, the only reason I ask is cuz I drive by Little Tree a lot, that lot is pretty flat, so it just seems. Funny to build it up. When it's, you know, you're already, if you're starting with a flat lot, like, you know, basically the same grade as the street, you're building it up. It's probably not significant, maybe five feet, but I don't know, and then, you know. Just use, that would cut down a little bit on the height, but if, you know, I know down the street, the other end of Lowell Street, they had problems, but the underground. Next to Dino's with the water issue, so I know the water table. Is fairly high around here, cuz I live right down the street, I think it's like thirteen feet, so I I would probably find that. Issue anyways, but I was just asking the question, that's all, thank you.
Hmm. Greg?
Yeah, I just wanna. Uh, kind of on the same vein as Joe and maybe he wasn't gonna go this far, but I'm still not sold. On the height and I think. Uh, although I may not be a voting member on this, there is one who isn't here who is probably gonna watch this video and. Uh, we're kinda glancing over the height, it seemed like we'd sort of moved on from there, I I think. The massing, I don't know, study, if you wanna call it that, the picture's almost did yourself a disservice, you know, he said, oh, you know, there, here's these other buildings, they're tall. We're taller because there isn't any other four-story buildings in this area, although I agree with Jim that, yes, this is getting more into character. It's still. Huge compared to, it's closer to the street. And larger than everything around it, and it's, it to me, it's still. No matter what you do, in my non-architect eye, no matter what you do to make it look like different buildings, it's still a a wall. Down that entire corner. And. The massing study really almost reemphasized that, not made me more comfortable. And the fact that we're. Building up a mound in front of it so we can get parking. building up a mound in front of it so we can get parking underneath almost makes me completely agree with what Mr. Lucy has said multiple times before, that it's still just too much building. I, I don't know if I would, if I'm necessarily as far as him down that road. But it that study didn't really alleviate any concerns for me. It's, maybe it did for everyone else. So it's not an issue that we need to even discuss. You know, I've been one member of, of this, this body, but yeah, it, it, it almost raised the concern for me.
Greg, um, I asked for that and it wasn't to relieve anything. It was more to provide this board with information. We've done it elsewhere.
No, I understood. Yeah, no, I get it.
And, you know, everybody needs to know what they're, what we're looking at. So it's nece, in my mind, it was necessary for you all to have that information. Uh, whether it did anything for you or not, or just um, made you wiser as to what's going, that's, that's fine. On, on the architecture, this is a trick, architectural trick by breaking down the facade, the facade of this building, basically. This is one of the things that we learn in school, basically. Uh, we can do it many different ways, but this is, this is one of them. And Brightview basically was one of those that started out that way where that architect proposed this sort of solution. And at the time I said, no, we want something that's more like Mount Washington, a big hotel. And that's what you've got. At, at Brightview is a big sort of hotel that matches the town in that area. In fact, historically, if you go back and look at some of the old buildings in that area, it certainly does fit in, even though people are complaining about the size. In this particular case, it's more about trying to break the mass down in architecture, basically, and color to meet in, to, to fit into the neighborhood. Uh, that's all it is. I mean, we are working on the ends of the buildings to do different things. Basically, I had one idea, like I said, and Andy had a different idea, basically. So, you know, we clipped the roof a bit. Short of getting rid of the garage, garage parking and put it where that new house is going to be. This is, this is the solution, basically, for this particular site.
Or, or don't build this big.
Or, or whatever. Yeah, yeah, sure.
It's not one solution. And I understand what you're saying, that's what you learned in school, but it doesn't do it for me. It's still a wall.
Yeah. That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I I don't think I would throw Joe's idea out so quickly. Because I, I think there is a way that you could lower the parking and drive into a lowered area, yet keeping the rest of it high and not worried, you know, you can, you can take care of the drainage without changing everything else. And if you lowered it all, you know, so that that first floor was on grade and you drop down into a parking lot somehow. Um, or even half of it or three quarters of it, you, you'd reduce a lot of height and get it back down so that it's more in keeping with the neighborhood. So I wouldn't throw Joe's idea out quite so quickly. I would investigate that.
Is there ledge under there?
That, I think that, 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 uh, you know, we are still really big for this corner.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Chip. I was just trying to find out, is there ledge under this building? Is that why they don't want to go down?
No, I think it was just a grading issue.
But John also mentioned some zoning thing, and I don't understand that. Brian, I don't know if you can explain that. It, it got into some zoning restriction of we can't go down.
We have a zoning line.
It's, it's a zone line. I'm just saying that if you were to look at that, what I'm, what I'm saying is it, it's hard to make that grade, have that grade or slope from Salem Street going down and making up five feet. It would be a very steep driveway down into the parking down below.
And maybe ideally I would somewhere else or you don't come in on the side or but I, I think what you're hearing people say is that 47 feet here is really too high. So if you want to stay at 19 units and not knock a whole floor off, then somehow you've got to lower this building is what I think I'm hearing people say. If I'm wrong, correct me.
That's what you're hearing.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we can't. I don't know if we can, uh, you know, and
Well, that's okay.
Yeah, and that's fine.
We gotta look at it.
Yeah, and it, yeah, and that's where the rubber hits the road. If we can't, we can't. And then that decision has to be made. So, and that's fine.
But you're, but you're agreeing, the team will look at it.
Well, I don't know, John, is that something, I don't want to promise something. Is that something you know that we just can't do or look at or? But, but you can look at all other alternatives, as in reducing the size of the building. It's not go look at this one instance. It's look at everything you can do. Other, other options.
Yeah, I mean, just kind of to give you an idea, the, the abutting property, as you look at the property, um, the site on the right, that house is set up. We're actually retaining it all along there because our driveway is going to be below um, that abutting property. Um, rated Salem Street is about, our driveway now is about three feet below that. And then it goes, you know, it varies as you go along. So we're already below that abutting property to the right.
Yeah, our, our ground line is below their ground line.
And your building's still 16 feet tall.
Can we agree you guys will just look at it? No promises?
Yeah, we, we're always
We'll study it. I mean,
See what we can do. Yeah, we always, you know,
Okay, we're not going to solve it here. We're not going to design it here. So, okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, real quick, is there a way to had, I don't know, show up an elevation of that, this building next to the one to the right? I know you guys showed, you know, the elevations of all the buildings around it, but that particular one, what this would look like compared to, like, would it the wall, the one to the right? And really, I don't really care about the left. I'm not really concerned too much about across the street.
Yeah.
What is that building to the right just going to look, the wall compared to this?
Uh, yeah, I think we could do something with that. Uh, Brian, we could, we could make a, it may not be a lush rendering, but at least
Yeah, just some, something real quick. That's all. Thank you.
Joe, understand that the building they're talking to, I believe, to the right is one that exists within their property.
No, that's gone, but the next one's
That's gone. Yeah. It's the next one over.
The one, yeah, exactly. I'm not going to have them, not the one.
The one that remains is the one we would show, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, Brian, was there any new material, any other material?
No.
Okay. Board members, any other comments or questions at this time?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll open up the public testimony. I already say hand up, uh, so we'll start with Jim Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. Jim and uh, Jim Sullivan, Six Harwick Road. Mr. Chairman, three year clerk in February, I sent a email with some questions. Uh, and I don't believe, uh, you've been back in a public forum or maybe you haven't, I missed it, but I sent it to uh, Mrs. Conroy and my questions were about the, the lot lines, uh, several questions, but I'll start with the lot line question. So my email spoke about the lot lines, uh, and the relief required for the lot widths and those sorts of things that, uh, the applicant is requesting. Do you recall that? Or do you want me to read from it or?
It's ringing a bell. I'm just looking for it in the file here, Jim, and I don't, I'm just not finding it right away.
Yeah, it was February 6th, uh.
I'm looking.
I'll be glad to read it or paraphrase it, but.
Yeah, why don't you, please, just because I, I'm struggling to find it. And if I, if I do, I can't, I don't have it to share. So, yeah.
There was an earlier meeting. I had a conversation with Attorney McGrath after the meeting. He provided me the A and R, uh, plan that went before the planning board. And, uh, it showed the three proposed lots, lots, uh, 11, 12, and 13. And my question to the board really was, uh, the, uh, the lots are, in my opinion, excessively, you know, not in compliance with the, with the bylaws. And I was just trying to understand the board's process or understanding of the fact that you know, where you are to date for this project, it, it has these lot lines that you'd have to give relief to, uh, extensive relief, in my opinion. So I'm just curious. First of all, uh, does the board consider that, uh, in the early stages of something like this? It, it appeared like they didn't, and I'm just trying to understand it. That was my question on the A and R and the lot layout. And I know Joe mentioned earlier about the lot layout and people using yards and, and, and the Attorney McGrath spoke about an HOA. My concern with lot lines, once approved, the lot lines that are, you know, they're forever. And, uh, with that comes whatever may come. So my question is about the lot lines, sort of in the beginning.
Okay, I did find your email, by the way. Thank you. Um, so Brian, is that something you can address?
Yeah, so I, I can address that. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
It is.
So I, I did speak with, uh, Mr. Sullivan. He contacted me after the meeting. I was cooperative with him. I sent him a copy of the A and R plan. Um, I don't think I got a copy of the letter that you sent to the board, Jim. I don't think you sent me a copy of that. So I, I haven't had a chance to really look at it and consider it what you're raising now. Um, but in any event, um, the lot lines on the lots that are there today don't comply. So we're just changing those lot lines. And we said from the beginning of this project, it's not a perfect situation. The way those lots were set up in the bill, in the beginning. Um, the lot lines have been approved by the planning board, or I should say not approved. They made a determination that they, they were required to sign an approval, not require a plan, which they did. So we're not, we, we're seeking relief for the lots as they've been created, not the lot lines. So we're, we're seeking relief for the lot shape. Um, is one aspect. And, and again, I haven't had a chance to see a letter, so there might be other things in there. So we acknowledge that the lots that exist pursuant to the A and R plan don't comply. And we, we've, uh, have requested variances for that, which those lots are probably better than what's out there today. Again, I haven't had a chance to look at it in detail. But in any event, I think what's presented on the plan certainly meets the standards for variance because you have um, real unique circumstances as far as shape of everything that's happening out there. So, but that will be an issue for the board to decide is, you know, if they decide to grant the relief for the project.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, so the, the Attorney McGrath, sorry, you, you didn't get the, the, the email. I didn't call out anything other than really what I, what I mentioned, that the, uh, I thought they're excessively out of compliance. And what's the board's, you know, sort of going in position? It seemed like there wasn't any discussion about those lot lines in the beginning. And, and that's really what I asked. Uh, I didn't cite any one thing in particular. I would say that the, you know, two of the lots, uh, had, had adequate frontage. And, uh, the proposed lots, I don't know if they all have adequate frontage or not. I think they do from what, uh, what you explained to me. But they were a lot bigger, uh, frontage, uh, for the other lots. In, in any event, my question really is somebody comes before the board with, with three lots being configured as they are. Is that not considered really is my question for the board? And what I mean to say is it didn't get a lot of attention in the beginning. Was that standard practice?
Well, I, again, I don't know if this, it's standard practice. I don't know if I can, uh, I would characterize it as that, um, because of the nature of this lot, as Brian said, it's very unique and unusual. But they've done their due diligence by presenting this to the planning board and getting that relief, as he noted, and coming to us and making, uh, several applications to get various forms of relief as well as a special permit for the use and the multifamily development, um, and the variances to, to make this proposal, um, happen. So I don't know, board members, I don't remember spending much time really talking about you know, the lot lines and the districts and, and how, and on the various forms of relief, we just, I think we just started down the path of looking at what was being proposed on, on the property, you know? Spend a lot of time with it.
Oh, I can, I, Mr. Mr. Ogrin totally prevent, presented it. And we looked at what was there and what happened and lots are lots. Now we look at the total thing as an entirety and see how it all works together. I don't think we spent an unusual amount of time on it. I think we spent a normal amount of time that we would spend on an A and R plan. Then, and, uh, Mr. Ogrin certainly, and Brian certainly went through it and told us how they got to where they are. Uh, I think we look at the things as a whole and not as individual pieces. So it's a puzzle out there. And that's what we're talking about. In my opinion, but we, we went over it. We understand it. We know where they're at and the frontages and everything else, in my opinion.
And Jim, I found, I found your email in my inbox. I sent it off to you, Brian. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Did you have anything else, Jim?
Yeah, I just, uh, I, I tend to believe, uh, you know, that the five facade front uh, looks good. Uh, I, I think there's some improvements have gone on since the last time I was on, uh, on the call with you folks. I, I still think it's, uh, way too big for the neighborhood, uh, with the, with the houses that are in the area. I think the two, uh, house lots in the rear are just, uh, an overreach for the, for the project for which you're trying to accomplish the the house, two houses in the rear of, of this building. It just, it doesn't, uh, fit really with any kind of, uh, typical layout. Uh, and I just think it's, uh, it's, uh, too large for the area. So that's my feedback to date. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jim. I see Albert in Jane DeDario.
Hi, I'm Jane DeDario. I live at One Hope Terrace, which is directly across on the Lowell Street side from this property. And I'm encouraged that you're continuing the discussion on this project because it's been a problem site. You know, we've been in this house for 40 years and it's just gradually got more and more unkempt over the years. And there's really no life over there. And I'm looking forward to bringing some vitality back to that space because even though it's going to be a big space, it's a big space now. And there's really nothing of any, um, excitement over there right now, except for a lot of traffic and chaos that's generated by that, um, retail site. So I'm encouraged and I hope that you can continue to, um, you know, promote the idea of uh, agreeing on something over there because it can only improve, uh, this location.
Okay.
And also
Hi, I'm Al DeDario from One Hope Terrace. And I think the, the, um, the project looks good from the pitches that I saw. It looks like it'll fit into the neighborhood. The stone wall of front looks nice. That's, there's a lot of stone walls in this area. I'm very supportive, supportive of the project and I'm excited that something's going to happen. It, um, it's going to be the facelift that that spot has needed for a long time. Too high? I don't know. I, you know, I, I don't think it's too high. I, I think it's, um, uh, I think it's something that's, that, that, that's needed, that, that'll make the whole neighborhood look a lot nicer than it is now. And, um, thanks, everyone. I know, um, you know, I, I watch these whenever they're on and I can see everybody working, um, hard, working together and trying to come up with the best project possible. And Jane and I really appreciate all your hard work. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. Kevin Gill.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Gill, 12 Mitchell Lane. Uh, I, I know there was a little bit of discussion about drainage, um, on, on this new set of plans. Is there going to be a more in-depth uh, look at drainage, uh, with regards to this project? That we're, we're right about, about the properties out back. Uh, we, we do have a serious, uh, flooding problem when we have a substantial rain. Uh, I, I did send in some pitches recently. I just want to make, want to make sure you got those. And, uh, just a question, uh, will we be looking at drainage, uh, in a deeper sense?
So, um, normally we, we would look at stormwater management plans, um, and any, um, engineering that is done, um, and reviews by the engineering department. Brian, where are we with the, the engineering and?
Yeah, so, so that, that's a good question. And, and, and Kevin, thanks for bringing that up because I was going to mention it and that, you know, thanks for your patience on that issue because you've had a couple of times. And we made a commitment at the beginning of this project, as Kevin mentioned, his We made a commitment at the beginning of this project, as Kevin mentioned, his circumstances out back and other people out back, that we were going to look into that. And we are, you know, what we need to kind of determine before we can do that is what the final layout of the plan is going to be. And then um, what we what we will do for you, Mr. Chairman, Kevin, we'll reach out to you. And I think, you know, John and I will want to meet with you maybe out at the site to determine what your issues are. So we have a full understanding of that. Not just guessing. And then, you know, John can talk about that and can talk to the town engineer about that and make sure that it's looked in thoroughly to make sure that you're not going to be impacted. And hopefully you're going to be benefited by what we're doing. That's what our goal would be. So we will, if that, if you're, if you would agree to do that, we'd like to meet with the out there. So we have a full understanding of what your issues are. And my clients, Bill and Jim, will participate in that too.
Yes, I'd be very happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kevin, we do, I I do have your letter here from uh March twentieth. With some pictures you sent, um.
Yes.
Um. It's in the file, but I don't, I don't know if we got, we all got that email. We, if I can find it or Gail, if you can make sure we, the board members have it, we can. Make sure Brian, you get a copy of that.
Yeah, I mean, the the short answer is drainage is an open issue here.
No, no, understood, understood.
And remains open, so.
Yes, just so you see the info that Kevin sent to us. Uh, you have that. Um. And this is not in the Concom's purview, right? It's not in their jurisdiction?
I believe so. I'll just have John confirm that.
Yeah, no, it's not, doesn't come under Concom jurisdiction.
Okay, but I know I, they got a, so Rebecca, we were talking about various projects going on and. Obviously familiar with the site and what goes on behind it and abutting properties. So she knew of the area anyway, and I don't know if there's any sort of. You know, conversations that can still occur outside a formal application with the Concom, but you know. It sounded like she was pretty knowledgeable what what's going on um around this site and uh could be a resource just to, you know. Answer questions, recommend things, work with the engineering, um, this, you know, reviews and so, you know, just another thought.
Yeah, our goal, our goal is always to try to think, make things better if we can. Um, for everybody, you know, as the DiDario said, you know, that's our goal. We like to try to work with people. So.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right.
I think right from the start, we're reducing quite a bit. I mean, that site's almost entirely paved. And so, I mean, the first, the first step toward improvement is what we're proposing to reduce a lot of that coverage. And as we talked earlier about plantings and grass and things, um. I think uh, once we get the layout set, then then John can really study the the drainage at a much. More detailed level.
Correct. But we will get there. Okay. Uh, I don't see any other hands up. So closer to public testimony for the evening, there'll be opportunities at future hearings, of course. All right, uh, back to the board, Brian, um. Sounds like there's some uh definite follow-ups here to continue, um. Uh, looking at the architecture a little bit and some of the other uh comments we got here, landscaping. Um. And where where's TAC? Where are we with TAC?
Yeah, you're gonna, we're we're working with Bill. We already met with Bill. We know we're on the same page with him on what, you know, what he wants us to do. Um, and you know, the other thing too is, you know, he's got greening issues out there too. So, you know, John, I don't know, you know, some of this stuff they're talking about on upgrading, that could affect what what he's doing out on Salem Street. Right? I mean, he's kind of like relying on our wall. I, you know, some of the stuff that was talked about in the meeting, we'll have to regroup with him. Before we look to make any changes.
Well, I mean, what what he showed as far as the realignment of um Salem Street and uh. And Lowell Street. I I don't think it's, it's going to have much effect in terms of the regrading or shedding water in different direction.
Okay.
Good. But I was also thinking about TAC specifically.
Oh, yeah, we went to TAC and they assigned Bill Renault to work with us.
Okay, but we haven't received any correspondence.
No, you're going to have to get that. That will come.
Okay.
You know, but, you know, we 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 still have a little bit of a moving target here with the site, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, they they had requested some, um. We do the calculations on the traffic slightly different, so we had submitted that to them.
Okay.
And they were fine with that. So you you need a memo. I agree. And you haven't got it yet.
Okay. All right. Um, continue to two weeks. We ready?
Fine, yeah, we'll go two weeks. If we're ready, we'll just, if we're not ready, we'll just continue.
Okay.
I move that we continue this April twenty sixth here.
Thank you. Any discussion? And voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe? Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thanks for the updates tonight. We'll talk to you in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, I'm ready along twenty-three dash sixty-six, sixty-seven and sixty-eight, Mira LLC and Sky Group Investments LLC at One Autobahn Road.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrath for the applicant. Uh, with me tonight is John Ogrin and also Anthony Goya is here. Uh, um, on behalf of iFly. Uh, we gave the board, I think the board remembers the videos that we showed, kind of this exciting project down at One Autobahn Road. At the last meeting, um, it was really kind of an overview. It was, it was very late at night, um, and um. So we we just kind of wanted John to kind of review the site plan a little bit. Um, I can bring up the architectural aspect. What we're looking for tonight, we 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 uh, we um, part of our application is we're looking for a parking reduction. Here that we'll be prepared to talk about in detail, the justification for that at the next meeting. Uh, but we'd like to just kind of go over the site plan to just see if there's anything else, you know, in particular that the board. Uh, is interested in for information as far as either the site plan or architecture, that we're not losing time, that we could be working on that. So, John, real, real, for for the sake of brevity and the and the time, could you bring up the site plan? And just kind of quickly review with the board what's happening out there? Because I think the last time they saw it was like twelve thirty at night. You there, John?
Thank you.
So again, existing site, existing Sheridan Hotel, um, located. Uh, along the the off-ramp of Route one twenty-eight and Autobahn Road, um. There's an existing access roadway that goes over to Market Street and Linfield. So refresh you this, this here is is the town line between Linfield and Wakefield. Um, basically Greedy Meadow. Um, about us to the north. As far as the site, um. You know, existing. Access to the to the parking in front of the the hotel. Um, off of the access road is parking along the side. Along Route one twenty-eight and then there's also another um access entrance on the far side of the building. Um. There's kind of the area of focus is. Uh, we have the Sargass River along the Eastly property line. Um, there's an existing area. That's paved um on that, near that, near the Sargass River. Um, right now, currently it's pretty much occupied by container, um. Just containers, there's, it's really not available for any kind of parking or anything. It's just used basically for storage. Um, so that's the area that we're kind of focused on. Uh, this is the proposed, so majority of the site staying the same, um, the area. And actually I have a blow up of that. The area that we're really focused on is um, this. Easterly corner of the property, um, we're proposing, uh, what was it? Thirty, about a thirty-five hundred square foot building. Uh, we're adding parking, a total of fifteen parking spaces along here, on the front, basically the front of the property. Um. As I said, this area in here is all paved. We're proposing to um, remove that pavement. And um, we vegetate that area along the river, uh, kind of improve the river front area. As far as utilities, um, there's. The existing water and sewer out in this accessway, so we'll be carrying the utilities from there to the proposed building. Uh, this parking lot out here, basically from about. This area in here all drains down. Um, sheets across the the parking lot, across this paved area and eventually goes into the the river itself. There is no. Uh, catch basins or drain manholes or anything in that area. So we are proposing to uh, install a curb along. Uh, this new parking to be able to capture that runoff from this parking area. Running it through um, some stormwater management areas, um. Basically like a storm scepter or treatment or treatment of of the runoff. Into a smaller depressed area and then eventually will be piped out um, to the rear of the building and eventually flow to um. The Sargass River. So that very quickly is.
Yeah, and John, we'll be filing with the Concom, right?
We are filing tomorrow.
Okay, so this does need conservation jurisdiction. Conservation approval, I should say. It's it's under conservation jurisdiction. Great, and John, can you stop sharing for a minute? Because I'd like to, uh, if I can. It's okay, Mr. Chair, uh Chair, if I can share my uh, my screen for a minute on the architectural.
Sure.
Thank you. We really, we talked a little bit about this, but um, this building is kind of like a really basic building and and I don't know if. The board needs any more information on this. Uh, Anthony, you here?
Yes, I'm I'm happy to speak to anything.
Right, right. I just want to make sure you're here because, you know, I mean, I don't think you're really concerned about the mechanical aspect of it, but. It's a pretty basic, um, you know, this is, this is the size of the building. And Anthony, can you maybe talk about the facade and the material that you utilize?
Sure, and this is actually a little different than the building that will end up um, constructing in the region simply. Uh, what's presented here is simply related to the, uh, okay, let's start with the premise of the building as I kind of presented last time, um. The structure in the shape and the envelope of the architectural, all architectural detail is a is a direct expression of the machine within. Um, we've kind of stripped all the fat and it's it's essentially just um, the minimum amount of skin to go on top of the. The living and breathing machine that is what this facility is. And. The uh, the towers you see on the left and right, it will be the east and west element. There are these, it's showing this color blocking scheme. Because these are, this is the concrete returner tower design. We also have one that's structural steel or we have um, an internal steel system for the returner towers. And it's where the air circulates and returns in its uh, along the flow path. From the um, as it goes up through the flight chamber, breaks out through the top, through the fans, goes down the towers. Um, turns, goes through the bottom and recontracts up through the flight chamber. So as it flows along that circuit. The two gray blockings are representative of the two, the towers. And they're more visible because they would be essentially an expression of the concrete, which is the tower material. But in the design we'll probably go with. And this region is, it's primarily related to the cost of building with concrete these days. It'll be. Um, kind of one more, a bit more solid, its color scheme, so more just a a consistent blue across the face. And I can actually show roughly what that would look like, Brian, if you want me to share my screen real quick.
Yeah, and just so you know, Anthony, just you can, but just so you know, what what you, when you decide, we've got to submit those plans because.
For sure, absolutely. We're we're, we're ninety-five percent confident at this point.
Because I know how the board thinks and they're thinking, they're looking at the screen now going, what? You know, because because whatever we, whatever we're proposing. And we would like to get approved, it becomes the plan of record that we actually have to build.
Certainly, right, and we're committed to that. And I think that's why we want, I wanted to introduce this design here because this is ninety-five percent likely what we'll be. Submitting, proposing and going with. It's a bit, as you can see, there's no uh monolithic gray blocking on the sides. It's it's a consistent blue. This is kind of the baseline proposed, um, current architectural prototype. For this particular building in the area. On the left, this is the one that was recently built in Detroit. Um, and actually, this is the, this is the Colorado Springs one. It's the same as the Detroit tunnel effectively. Um, and it's a larger machine. But as previously discussed and introduced in the last meeting, um. This building, every bit of it's essentially designed to accommodate the structure and and with nothing, with nothing superfluous. So, um, not a lot of variation from this design is possible, but we are willing to, you know, uh, work with you all on aesthetics and various things. That might bring it um, and in line with some local or regional kind of design cues or colors or characteristics. But essentially, this is, um. This is the, the building is, there's not much malleability in the shape or the geometry, simply related to the fact that it accommodates. Exactly the machine underneath. So I think I have a slide that, yeah, as I should last week, this is basically with the machine under the skin of the building looks like. So this is pretty much what we're proposing to construct on that, on that site.
So, so Anthony, we're going to have to fine tune this on on which one, because John's going to have to make sure that matches his site plan, um.
So the 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 footprint is identical to the site plan, nothing changed. Realize it. Just, it's just, are the sides of the building concrete? Exposed concrete blocks for the towers or are they internal towers with a facade over top as you're seeing here? Which is where I I again, confident that it's ninety-five percent, that's, that's what we're going to be going with in the area, something like what you're seeing on the screen now.
So the question, Mr. Chair, on the architectural, you know, what what? Beyond a design scheme like this, once we finalize it, would the board want to see if anything? We just, you know. Well, go ahead, Jim.
I'd like to see how this fits in. I mean, uh, it says like fifty feet high, all right? Um, and it sits in a, it sits in a bowl over there, probably loses ten feet from the highway. Just sitting in that what used to be a heliport, I guess. Um, but I'd like to see how that fits in with the hotel. Uh, more succinctly, not just in a ground plane, but more of aesthetic sort of a view. And it's not so much color, although that will come to bu- come about and blue might be fine. Or gray might be fine, but I'd like to see how it fits in with the hotel. It is offset to some degree. Plan wise, so it's not so close to the hotel that the hotel should drive some sort of aesthetic. Appearance for this, but I I'd like to see it uh, more like when we deal with a neighborhood type of. Project where we see what happens around it. Although this, there there's only two buildings playing with one another here and that is. That is basically hotel in this building and they share a parking lot. So I think that's where I'm coming from, from the moment.
Certainly. Yeah, and so I'll make a note, that'll be our next step is at this point, it's kind of the the next for us. Progressing from here and knowing that you're kind of on the same page, we'll go forward with developing renders. And 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 so as to reflect what this would look like in situ. And the approximate relationship with the hotel. So I think that'll be our, um, that'll be my takeaway going into the next. Few weeks is to get a set of renders developed.
Okay.
Yeah, I get, I guess I'd be with Jim, but not quite on the same. Plane. I think this is a great opportunity to have a really funky building that doesn't relate to anything. Because it's sitting in its own bu- ball next to a, next to. The the hotel, like if the hotel's fine with it. You know, it doesn't need to relate to the Linfield up behind it. It doesn't need to relate to the, to the gym. This could be like, people are saying it's a destination of Wakefield. This could be like, hey, have you seen the building that you do? You know, skydiving in next to the hotel, you know, I don't think it needs to relate to anything. And I think it just should be cool and updated and as funky as you want to make it. I think it's a great opportunity to just be its own person and own place.
I I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm going as far as you might think I am going.
I know, I just wanted to take it to the far extreme.
Okay, but we're going to get elevations. We're going to nail down this design. We need to get there, okay?
And then you also probably, I would assume, Mr. Chair, going to want to see detail on signage.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Any lighting on the building or outside? We're not going to have spotlights shining on the highway or any of that stuff, but we, you know, any lighting aspects. Signage, lighting, yes.
Yeah, usually typically our signage is all um internally lit. We don't have any uplighting on the facility. Um, but we're happy to to accommodate that ask as well, for sure.
Okay, well, yeah, other than just, you know, nighttime lighting out at the entrances or. You know, but nothing like going up and down the buildings to accent or do anything, you know, just if, if, I don't know what your other sites have, so.
We want attention, but we don't want to put on a show. It's.
Well, even that, the the emblem on the side, is that lit up or is it just um? Well, even that, the the emblem on the side, is that lit up or is it just um, you know, a ma- a material that you can just see at the day and at night, it's? It's sort of.
The intent is the internals, the this, the large, I'll share my screen once again, just for.
Why logo, if you will.
Yes, we could, that's that's our our square box logo. Um that is, that is, the intention is for that to be internally lit as well.
Okay, so we'd want to know that. Um, you know, some sort of lighting plan. So again, we don't have to dive on it, but just a lighting plan of lighting elements, that that element. Lighting at the at the entrance, anything, parking lot lighting, just whatever you're proposing for lighting on the site, signage on the site. Um in a directional signage at the, in the parking lot. Um in concert with the hotel entrance, maybe there's a signage out at the front to direct people how to get here and where where to go. As they're coming off the highway, and so any, Brian, you know the drill, right? We we just, we want to get there. Um. Yep, I think we're all excited for it, it's just we got to do our due diligence, we want to look at.
Absolutely, and and that was my hope here with this, this next step in the next meeting was to further my understanding of exactly what the. Ask was going to be and what each, you know, each component, each composite um led us to as far as discussion, so. Yeah.
Planting too.
The like the um la- landscaping?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Yep. And some of that may be come out of the Concom discussions, because you're near the river there and they're going to probably look for certain things on that side of the building. You know, to make things better, um and what kind of vegetative stuff uh would work there, but uh, okay. Anything else, board members? Joe, I see your hands up.
Yeah, a couple of comments, I was actually going to men- mention the signage earlier, but um. Real quick, uh what's your hours or operations going to be here?
So uh typically on the weekdays, you know, we open around eleven and we'll close probably. It depends, it's highly dependent on the operational rhythms, and we let the operators in each region kind of take point and run this, but averages eleven to probably. Eight or nine P M. on the weekdays, and then Saturday, we may open a little earlier, but typ- typically we close around uh ten or eleven in the evening.
And are you going to be serving food or alcohol or anything or?
Nope, the most we would have available is like a vending machine.
All right, and then one other question, did you think about maybe introducing? An E V charger here? I don't know if it's a good opportunity to add one here, since there's nothing around or that in your, you do that?
Yeah, the the question always is, you know, how is that uh the cost of an E V charge, you know, and the installation covered? Is it some, is there provision in the government and local municipality to offset some kind of cost with a green credit? Otherwise. We haven't, the amount of time that the average person is parked at our facility isn't really conducive to serious charging. Of a vehicle and it's. We 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 always uh recently have avoided installing E V chargers to the infrastructure of our parking lot, because it's just.
No.
For us, and there's extra costs associated with it, and there's not much return on.
I understand, I just, I.
Happy to, we're happy to discuss uh further and and not immediately prove the idea, but typically we avoid.
Um yeah, it's, yeah, it's just something I thought about. I mean, you 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 mentioned you built like four hundred of these, so I was just curious if you, if that's something that you. Implemented in your. Your scope of work, but you know, just something to think about.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Anyone else?
Oh, Joe, that's interesting that the hotel and the power company haven't got together over there, because power companies putting them all over the place. You'd think they'd be approaching the hotel.
Yeah.
I mean, if if the power company, if if there's a collaborative effort and they would like to um. Provide the material and and work on, consider collaborate with the infrastructure, and that's something that there's an initiative there. Um we're open to that conversation, but it always comes down to, you know, are we paying to charge someone else's car?
No, I mean, they would, they would, obviously, there would be a credit card machine there, but you would think this this turbine was create its own electricity.
Unfortunately, it costs us quite a bit of the.
No, it works the other way around, Joe.
Yeah, run it backwards.
Yeah, it takes the power from the cars.
We'll take the ceiling off when we're not using it, try to catch some ambient river.
Okay, anything else, board members? Okay, any, any other um new info, Brian, before we? No, yeah. Got a lot of homework here, a lot of punchless thing, yeah, for tonight. Yeah. Okay. We're good. All right, um we'll open up the public testimony. If any member of the public has a comment or question, please raise your hand at this time in the Zoom meeting. Saying no hands, I'll close it to public testimony. So two weeks, Brian, and then we'll see where we are. Yeah, exactly, yeah, and you're right now good until the end of May, Mr. Chair, you okay? Or do you want an extension? No, why don't we? Deal with it next time.
We can get the extension next time.
Okay, yeah.
I move that we continue this to our April twenty-sixth hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, voting membership?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thanks for the updates tonight. Um we'll look forward to some uh some additional details uh in a couple of weeks.
Perfect.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave. Quick question. We only do one meeting in July and one meeting in August. We do two in June, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's. As we're start continuing all this stuff, it's scarily close to May.
All right, moving on to new hearings. Twenty-three dash sixty-nine J C G Investments LLC at Six Quarter Street. Okay, for the record, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrae, representing the applicant, uh J C G Investments. Uh who is uh James Catuso, uh who is with us tonight. Um Jim has been before the board now. Uh at least two or three times, he refreshed the board's memory, he did the uh nice job up the, at the uh. Up on uh Winship, uh the mansion, the old Nazareth Academy, that was Jim's project where he. Uh removed that building, he constructed two absolutely beautiful single family homes, um which are um pretty much done. Uh he also uh has a, was before the board um for a project on Nelly Street. And now we're before you on uh property at uh Six Quarters uh Street, and this is an application under one ninety dash fifty. Uh for a raising and reconstruction of a single family home. I'm just gonna quickly. Show the board, so this is the uh property on Quarter Street. Um Jim, Jim per- Jim acquired this at foreclosure. Property uh is in a significant state of disrepair. Um a lot worse than it looks in this picture, there's there's issues inside the building. Um he's still in the process, I think, Jim, you're still in the process of trying to do some evictions there, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so you know, there's a lot of, um if you drive by the property, it's it's not in a good state, so. Um we're looking for a finding to raise and reconstruct this building. Um in that regard, I submitted uh a um architectural plans and also a site plan. Uh to the board. I'm going to start with the site plan, so I can familiarize you with the site. And the spec- specifications on the site. Good. Yeah, so. Uh plan was done by Paul Fanokio, um and it has, it has both on each side, so on the left it has existing, on the right it has proposed. So as you can see, um the building is kind of currently tucked on one side of the lot. And it's got an illegal shed in the back, right on the property line. I'll get into the the specifications on the setbacks, et cetera, but but this is the outline of the. Existing house, it's only two point nine feet from this neighboring property line. Um what Jim intends to do, um he intends to reconstruct the house, so completely raise it. Pull it back from this sideline from two point nine to ten feet, and then nineteen feet on this side. Um and so it's a pretty, pretty basic construction. I think architecturally, you'll be impressed, it's a nice home, but. As far as the specs go, this property is in the single residence zoning district. It's a a legal nonconforming lot, twelve thousand square feet is required, it has seventy-two oh seven, obviously, nothing's changing there. Frontage is is required at a hundred, when it was created, it was eighty, and and again, legal nonconforming. Uh the front setback requirement is twenty feet, the existing on the house above uh is twelve point nine feet. Jim pulling it further back from the street, so he's making that circumstance better, not further approaching at fourteen point nine. Uh the side yard requirement is fifteen, and on the right side, as you face the house, it's currently forty-eight point six, Jim somewhat balancing it out. And pulling the house more to that side and going nineteen uh feet. On the left side, as I mentioned, it's only two point nine, he's pulling that out to ten, so again, there's nothing that's being made worse here, everything's being made better. Um the rear uh requi- requirement is twenty uh five feet, it does not currently meet that requirement. It's only twenty-four point nine, Jim is going to meet that requirement at twenty-six. Uh lot coverage, um thirty, it's currently eighteen, we're going to increase it to twenty-nine point nine, but it meets the zoning requirement of thirty. Height thirty-five, Jim's going to be thirty-one. And then front yard open space, sixty is required, it's currently seventy-six, we're going to be just over sixty in compliance. In open space, uh forty percent is required, it's currently sixty, that's really not changing too much, it's going to go to fifty-seven, but again. Uh welling compliance. So I'm going to now show you the house that Jim is proposing to build. Now, this is, I don't know how how much you're really interested in the floor plans, um I think I'll, I'm going to go to, so this is, you know, this is a front porch, the garage is recessed. You've got your living dining, family kitchen, first floor. Um upstairs to the second floor, it's a four bedroom house. Um master and then four bedrooms, and then is an unfinished attic. Um this is the elevation, I think it's fairly attractive compared to what's there now. I think it's uh pretty, pretty, fits well into that neighborhood. It works with the topography, Jim had the architect make sure of that. This is the right side elevation, so this is from the the lakeside, if you will. This is the rear elevation. And then the uh left side elevation. So is that a basement that's below grade or given the topography on? Yeah, so it's an unfinished basement here, Mr. Chair, you can see that, the garage, so the 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 uh, this is the garage. This is the street where my cursor is at the bottom of the screen, and then Jim has an unfinished basement, correct? And it's not a, it's not, uh Jim, it's not a walkout, right?
No, it's not.
Yeah. So I think this is a a fairly straightforward finding um request. Um I think it uh meets all the requirements. I I would suggest that it, you know, it it meets both prongs, it doesn't, and it does not intensify. Any existing nonconformities, um and I think it also, it's clearly compared to what's there now. Um is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood as well. Happy to answer any questions of board mayhem. Okay, thank you, board members. Jim, I see your hands up.
So I live just up the street at uh twenty-three Quarter Street. And um it's the the pictures that's shown as to the existing condition. Are way out of scale with what's going on down there. The paint's peeling, the gutters are falling off, nobody's doing any, any work around this place at all. It really does need to be replaced. Uh if if anybody remembers in two thousand fifteen. Um there was another house up the street, basically, uh of about the same scale that was uh built. Um on the street, basically leaving some of the old house there and some of it expanding. And and basically is built in such a way that probably the similar sort of um small lot. Uh house, basically lot, was built on theirs, and then the neighbor to that guy. Basically, he's got a similar sort of lot, so the lots along there are pretty small, and the houses do fill up a lot of the lot. And this one would not be out of character with what happens on the street, and certainly. Uh the condition of the house is such, it does not much that you can salvage at this point, and I hate to see. From the outside what the condition is on the inside. So I'm in, I am quite frankly, as a neighbor in the area. Um very mu- very positive about having this, allowing this to happen.
Good, thanks, Jim. Chip?
Yeah, I. I'm still kind of not sure about the. Understanding the grade and elevation from the garage to the front door and. What's happening landscaping as compared, not necessarily bushes, shrubs, but how's that? How is it happening, right? That the picture showed it kind of up on a knoll, is this still on a knoll, and is there a lot of excavation needed? Um it's a, it's a whole new. Um foundation, I'm assuming, so.
There you go, Chip.
Yeah, so what, you showed a house facing Cordis, which this is, so. Does that tree come down? The garage is on the left-hand side, you know, what's, what's, how does it all fit and work?
Jim, can you talk about that?
Yeah, sure, Brian. So basically, you know, part of that. Part of that uh hill is going to get scraped down, and then the garage, you know. Would drop down, I guess, to address your point about the garage entering the house, the garage would be kind of like. Four to five steps below the main part of the house, so you'd pull in the garage, then there'd be four steps to go up. But um you know, the driveway would meet the compliance with the uh, you know, the pitch requirement that Wakefield has, and like I said, part of that slope would kind of get. Tapered down a little bit, and then there would be either like a field stone wall on the left or something to hold the, hold the grade um. But that hill isn't going to like get totally wiped away, it's just going to have us like a small haircut to what would be the best by description I could make.
And then do you have two retaining walls on either side of the driveway going into the garage?
Yeah, you'd have two small retaining walls.
So, Chip, you want to see the architectural plan again?
So I guess my question is, is you know, are you going to keep the character, are they going to be uh natural stone retaining walls? Are we keeping the character of the street in in doing this? Are we going to have? Um uniblock walls, I mean, what?
No, it's going to be all.
Concerned about character more than I am.
Yeah, so it's going to be all natural. Yeah, it's going to be all natural fieldstone, and it's going to resemble a kind of a New England farmhouse, it'd be all very classic lines with. You know, very uh tastefully done. Um it won't have any of those uni-lock manufactured engineer blocks, it's going to be. You know, carriage house farmhouse style. Um you can see that there's a lot of design elements with the colonial style of the house that kind of resembles the house that's there. Um you know, with, we'll call it the main box or the main part of the house. But um you know, the garage, like I said, it'll have four steps, you know, three or four steps, somewhere in that range to go into that little mudroom area. That connects to the house.
Coming along around and connecting to the front as well.
Correct, correct.
Driveway on the right all gets removed.
Correct, and then kind of some of the fill will get shifted to the right, and I I actually think it'll look a lot better, it looks kind of silly the way it is now with that huge hill. But that's just my own personal opinion. I think whoever did it back in the day did it to try to enhance the view of the lake, but. I don't know if there's any real rhyme, rhyme or reason as to why it's done that way. I think they did it to sit the house way up high so that they could, you know, see the lake. My entire, my, yeah, my entire team is, you know, very cautious of, you know, considering all the neighbors' views and. You know, making sure that nobody's view will be impacted with this house, so we did, you know.
How does that telephone pole tie into your? Where does that hit on your front yard?
So the driveway be to the left, the driveway be, would be to the left of it, and uh, you know, it's, you'd have plenty of room.
Yeah.
Yeah. But instead of having like, you know, eight steps there, maybe there'd be, you know, maybe the wall would just be a little bit higher, but we're going to rebuild all the walls, all natural. Fieldstone, you know, with a very light, you know, edge to the to the cement line, the mortar line. It's going to be a really beautiful house when it's done, and it's not going to look big, it's going to, it's going to fit very nicely. It's gonna be a really beautiful house when it's done and it's not gonna look big. It's gonna, it's gonna fit very nicely into that location. Obviously, it's a pretty prominent corner. You can see the house when you, you know, pass by the lake. Most people can see it, you know, when they pass that corner, but it's gonna look really. Really nice and it's it's gonna be modest. The house isn't very big. It's only two stories. It doesn't have a walk-up attic or any sort of third floor and we kept the height down. And I think it's it's gonna look really pretty on that lot. The it's a small lot, but it's a small house or relatively smaller house that's being replaced.
How many square feet is the house?
I think it's like in the high two thousands, like twenty-eight hundred square feet, twenty-seven hundred square feet. Not that big, um, but it's only two stories. Um, so it should, it should fit nicely.
So, okay, great. I I agree. I think it's a total upgrade. So. Brian, for you and for you, Mr. Chair, how do we memorialize all the things he just said he was gonna do? With the fieldstone walls and because that's. That's what's not gonna be more detrimental to the neighborhood. If it stays classic. If it doesn't stay classic, then it is potentially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So. How do we memorialize all that he just said he was doing? Cause we don't have it on a plan at all.
Yeah, so. I I just want, a couple of things I I I wanna say and 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 Jim McBane is right. The the condition of the house is horrific right now and. And I wanna point out to the board. Mainly for Jim's reputation, cause he does have a very good reputation in the building field. The condition of the house has nothing to do with him. He bought it in November of two thousand twenty-two. At foreclosure sale. So, and he can't get into the house because because there's people living there that have to be evicted. So, so it's, you know, it's it's like, it's.
Yeah, no.
So, so that's number one. Number two, you know, as far as that stuff goes, Chip. You know, I don't only answer that because this is a finding and it actually it's, it's even a clear finding on the first prong. So. You know, I I think, you know. You know, from a technical standpoint, you know, you, I think it's difficult for you to condition it. Um.
I, that's why I'm asking, cause everything he said makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's just that, you know. You know, potentially the board remembers if he comes back next time.
Well, so so Chip too, I think I take it as you. Saying that what he said makes it not more detrimental to the neighborhood, isn't the right way to take it. It's the. How do I say it? The movement of the, it's not the project as a whole that we're supposed to view is more, it's it's the. Repositioning of the setbacks and the. Um, you know, the other. If we were to call them variants, uh wha- what otherwise would be variances that are not more detrimental. If they wanted to come in and put in a. I don't know, ultra-modern house. That still met these new setbacks. It the they it wouldn't be more detrimental to the neighborhood. They're making the setbacks better. Not, you know, the design of the house in this isn't within the purview of what they're asking. I understand what you're saying.
I get you. I get you. I I agree, but. No, as as a finding, I know we can't.
That's why. I'm even taking finding aside. It's just we're we're not really even looking at design really. In in if we.
Well, other than the box and the setbacks and all of that.
Yeah.
However, this is.
Do I think you should ask those questions?
Recorded.
Yeah.
And I'll just bring the recording when you're building an ugly wall.
Yeah, no, that's what I was gonna say. I think I think you're in your right to ask those questions and if they answer, right?
I mean, I think I think the answer to it is Jim is a is a is a.
No, I I mean, I, he's done the jobs up on Winthrop. I I know what he's done.
Yeah.
One at a time, one at a time. We we got a transcription here that's losing its mind.
Yeah, so I'm I'm fine. I just asked if there was a way to memorialize it and there isn't, so I'm good.
Jim, you're committed to doing those walls that you said, right?
Oh, yeah, of course. I drive by that house all the time. I can't go in it, but I drive by it a lot.
But you are committed to doing the walls that you said you were gonna do, the stone walls and not the.
Oh, I I love I love my field stone walls, Brian. Those would be the nicest walls you'll see in Wakefield.
Super. He's now said it multiple times. Awesome. All right, thanks. Joe, quickly, please.
Yes, um, well, the house is built in eighteen fifty, so I mean, this is not an historical. It's not a store falls or anything, right?
It is. We've we've been before the historic commission and and they implemented their six-month uh uh demolition delay on this house, which is in, which is in, which is in. Uh, progress.
All right, and the the Chip's point, just because you think it's ugly doesn't mean someone else thinks it's ugly, right? I mean. More detrimental to who, right?
It's about the setbacks, as Greg was trying to say. It's really not.
Right.
Beauty of the house.
Yeah, I'm done.
Yep, it's about the existing nonconformities and whether they're getting better or worse. And I was finding that, so. Um, Jim.
Yeah, I I I mean, to the point that Chip's making, I mean, we're we're presented with a proposed idea. And it looks like it fits the neighborhood. But to Greg's point, it could be a modern house. Basically, it does, it just has to fit the profile, period. So, you know, what we've been shown, we can't sort of pay attention to, but. We are paying attention to because it does fit the neighborhood. So I am a little concerned on that point. To Chip's, to Chip's point, though.
Well, you're gonna, we we're gonna, we tie in, we tie in the architectural plans into this decision.
Right, your your corners are. Right, what was presented tonight is what's gonna get built.
That's right.
There's an interior wall somewhere that changes, doesn't matter.
Well, we don't care. We don't care about that.
Yeah, but 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 this decision will 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 basically say that the finding, the the finding that you've made is dependent on the fact of the. Site plan and the architectural plan that was.
Presented.
Was presented, so. You know, if if, and I'm dealing with this now with with Benny and to his credit, if if Jim shows up with plans to build something entirely different than what's on those architectural plans. It's not happening. He's sending you back to, he's sending Jim back to the board.
Right.
So, so that the plans that you see that have been presented, uh, the houses that are gonna be built, that's gonna be right into your finding, cause. It's gonna say that the finding is is. It to, you know, you know, not not, you know, not verbatim, but is reliant on the plans that were submitted.
Yeah, and and by the way, my question was not his, it was more of a. Question, not. A statement against Jim and Jim's building.
Oh, no, I.
Right, I I don't take it the wrong way. It was more of how do we, in all these cases? How do we memorialize and we can't what people tell us they're gonna do from the landscaping and all that? But it had nothing to do basically with the.
Yeah, I mean, you dealt with this chip at. Um, the one on Elm Street near Mr. Lucy's house, you know, same thing. Remember you were saying, you know, you're, you know, you were asking for your commitment on these walls and.
Right.
Neighbor and.
Yeah.
You know, and that's and that's, you know, here, but the but the but the architectural plan. That everybody thinks, you know, fits in here, that Jim has said is gonna be a twenty-eight hundred square foot house, twenty-seven, whatever that plan shows. That plan is locked in here and decides to change it. He's coming back to the board to tell you about it.
Yeah, cause the setbacks are what he's presenting.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Board members? All right, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question about this. Application, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Hi, is this the board chairman?
Yes, it is. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yep, for the record, this is uh Frank Callan, one sixty Main Street. My house is approximately uh hundred plus feet from Quarter Street. Mm-hmm, so in essence, uh, six quarters is is almost like two houses away. Um, we're really excited that Jim has taken on this this development task to replace that. Um, badly needed replacement home that exists today and and we're excited and. Looking forward to a new, a new um, single-family home in the neighborhood. Thank you so much. My question is, um. And I'm not sure if Wakefield has zoning bylaws for rodent control. When in fact, the house will be excavated or the 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 basement sounds like will be excavated and replaced. Is there any provisions that could be made for specifically rodent control that? Been vis- visibility seen at that site over over some time? Is there any provision where where pest rodent control could take place? Uh, post eviction and and pre-construction? That's my question.
Thanks, Frank. Valid question, and it's come up with other projects. Brian, is that something you can?
I can, yeah, so it's a good question and and the process with that is that when Jim applies for his permit to raise the building. Um, prior to that permit issuing, there has to have been a pest mitigation done on the property. By a licensed pest uh person or company. And the building inspector will require that certification before he issues the raising permit. So there is a, there is a requirement in the town for that to happen prior to the property. So it will be, it will be baited, it will be trapped. And and Jim has to certify or the, he has to provide a certification from that company to the building inspector that that's been done. And it's only good for a certain period of time. So if a cer- if a certain time goes by and Jim doesn't take it down, he'd have to do it again.
Okay, do we know what that time is? Is that weeks, a month, or?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't, but I can tell you this, I can guarantee, and I think Jim will tell you, the minute he gets that, he's not gonna wait, right, Jim?
No, usually, usually, usually what happens too is if like uh. You know, Bay State Pest Control, they're out of Wakefield. I think they usually come out and do it. They did a great job with Mansion Road and they set up a ton of traps, so. Have a lot of confidence that they'll 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 do a great job and, you know, they're very thorough with it and they certify it and that, you know, certification that goes in. They usually do it just a couple days, you know, five to seven days before the house comes down.
Excellent. Thank you very much and congratulations and good luck in going forward.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Any other hands? Seeing none, we'll close with the public testimony.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information that was presented tonight regarding the architectural plans. Uh, and the discussion of the setbacks, given the current property versus the new. I deem that we find uh this not to be more detrimental and even if we did find it to be more detriment. Uh, that it's the continuation of the nonconformities. Uh, are not detrimental and even if we did find that they were intensified, that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Based on, based on the drawings and information presented to us this evening.
Okay.
That's good for us, Mr. Chair. Perfect. That works, not intensified, and if it was, it's not substantially more detrimental.
I don't know if we call it perfect, but he got there.
Thank you. I I use the wrong words about five times, but besides that, it was good.
I was being generous, Greg.
I'm old and it's late.
If only there was a template that you could have reference, so.
Yeah, there is. I would have to know where that is.
Um, is there a second perhaps uh somewhere else?
Maybe, nobody wants a second then.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joe.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Your finding is approved.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Appreciate y'all.
All right, appreciate your patience. Have a good night.
Hey, Brian?
Yes, sir.
When's the six months up?
Um. I would say Chip, he's probably, my guess is, I think he's like, just a guest, maybe three into it.
Okay. I'm surprised that's on the historical register.
All right. Wanna keep going?
Sure, feel free.
Well, I think we've long awaited this next one. Wondered when it was gonna happen. Twenty-three dash seventy, seventy-one and seventy-two, A and E Realty Trust. At four sixty to four sixty-six and four seventy-two Main Street, AKA the old Malice Building.
That's it. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing A and E Realty Trust, four sixty to four seventy-two Main Street. Uh, with me tonight is Andrea Cidos. Um, he's here on behalf of his dad, Alexandros. Uh, Cidos, uh, who is a trustee of the trust. Rick Salvo is our site civil engineer on this project. Uh, with the Engineering Alliance. Um, and the folks from Phoenix Architects are here. It's either, I think it's either Peter or Steve. Uh, or both that are here tonight. And then also Scott Fitzpatrick, I believe, is on. Scott is our construction. Um, uh consultant um on this project. So i- this is, I think, a long-awaited project. There's been a lot of discussion in town about this property. It's it's. Known to many as the old Malice Restaurant Building. I remember it as a kid as Maxwell Furniture Store. Um, and so it does have a history in town. It's in a very prominent location, which is across the street from. Um, the Civic Center. Um, Mr. McBane has been talking about this area of the town, you know, when's it gonna happen? You know, the Santanda Bear Bank kind of kicked it off and now. Um, with the um encouragement of our town council, who were were very encouraging. Um, to my client on this project to uh try to get something going with it. Um, we, uh, here we are and um, what we are proposing is is in essence a total. Uh, revitalization of the of the property. It will be probably potentially an entire raising of the property. Our structural people will tell that. To us once we get in to the project or if not, a significant um. Raising of the property and reconstruction. Um, what we're, what we're requesting is, we're requesting uh special permits. Um, only for this project. Um, for the um, construction of sixteen um residential units. In combination with other uses that could include retail service establishments, indoor restaurants uh at this site. Um, we're very excited about it. Um, I think we've got a great development team on this project. We have spent a lot of time. Um, before filing, um, we, you know, uh, Phoenix had the whole property lasered for measurements. There were structural issues that Scott had to look into. We've worked with the building department, uh. Uh, building inspector Ben DeChristophero has been really helpful on this as far as safety, the fire department. Um, there was environmental contamination incident on the property, which significantly delayed. Um, the process in getting to where we are, but in any, in any event, um, here we are. And we have a strong desire uh for this redevelopment to go forward. We're excited about it. I'm very excited about this. This project, I think it's gonna fit in very well um with the area. So tonight, we always, as you know, look at our introductory meeting and that's what we would like to accomplish. Um, and I think I'm gonna start with Rick Salvo. If, Rick, are you here? Cause I know you had a meeting in Watertown. Are you back with us?
I'm back.
Now, that's great. Good timing. So, um, with that said, Rick, if you could, if he could, Mr. Chair, bring up the site plan and go through it with the board.
Sure.
Great. So why don't you kick us off, Rick, and then we'll go to uh, we'll go to Phoenix.
Great, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance. Um, I guess the site really doesn't need an ex- an introduction. Seems like everybody um knows the site pretty well. Um, this is the existing conditions plan. Uh, Main Street's on the left side of the plan. There's a twelve-foot wide uh right-of-way that provides access into the site. Um, the entire site is either occupied by the existing building um or pavement. There's really no green space um on the site to speak of right now. Um, if we. My computer stopped choking on this here. One second. Here's the aerial view. You can see building, all pavement. And there's a parking deck on the on the property behind us here. Um, take a look at the site plan. Um, I think one of the biggest improvements that's gonna occur is this, if the whole building doesn't get raised and the building gets renovated, certainly this piece of the building here will be eliminated. To create a twenty-four-foot wide accessway that would lead to um a podium-type parking situation in here. Which would provide twenty-two um proposed uh parking spaces underneath the building. Um, all the parking spaces are nine by eighteen. Um, we got a a twenty-two-foot aisle in this section of the building. And a much greater aisle width um in this part of the building. Take a quick look at the at the parking. Um, obviously, we have the sixteen units, uh, which yields a total of twenty-four spaces required. Um, forty-four hundred square feet of uh retail and service establishments will require another eighteen. Spaces for a total forty-two um parking spaces. The site right now is proposing to provide uh twenty-two parking spaces. Uh, we worked uh with uh Wakefield Light Company to get the transformer location. It'll be removed from this area in the back of the building here. It'll be removed from this area in the back of the building here. Relocated back here where their loading dock is, this is a CMU block wall, so it lines up pretty well to be able to place that there. And create a little bit of amenity space, um, for the development, a little bit of green space and sort of a, a promenade-type area. Um, that can be used for the folks that live there, or perhaps if one of these turns into a restaurant, maybe a little outdoor, um, eating area. Um, relative, um, to the zoning.
Rick, you, we're gonna get into that later, you don't need to get into that tonight, that's gonna be for later, this is.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's essentially the way the site's gonna lay, layout, I think big improvements to the access onto the site. Um, and some off-street parking, so I think with that, since this really isn't much site here, it's mainly all building. I'll toss it over to, uh, Peter and his team.
Yeah, and just keep that up for a second, Pete, uh, Rick, I mean, you know, the, the exciting part, part of this is, is kind of the reuse and Peter will get into this, or Steve, I don't know who's gonna present for Phoenix, but. Um, in any event, um, the back, to be able to use that, it's like an old warehouse area in the back. Be able to use that for parking is like a real home run for this, because you'd look at that building and you'd say, boy, you're a great, great developer, you can't provide any parking. We've been able to find twenty-two parking spaces for the residential use. So, okay, Peter?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I'll be able to show my screen. I can get it a little tighter. Too big?
Yeah, right there.
Better, okay. So what we did first is go into the building and, um, identify what was existing. Um, here we should be looking at, uh, the first floor existing and we all may remember that Molease on the left side of the building had. Uh, several retail spaces, then there was a, more like a central entry, um, there was a. Ice cream place, various other establishments, the back was mostly warehouse space. Uh, the area that, uh, to the far rear left, uh, is a full concrete, three-story structure. Um, we thought that just made most sense to convert to parking. And, uh, through conversations with Scott, decided to extend that into the warehouse space, which is in the back. Very difficult to get light ventilation back here, so turning into parking just seems to make most sense, so. We jump forward to the proposed first floor, uh, plan, we're showing the parking in the rear. We're trying to take the center core of the building and make, um, an exterior courtyard space, a lot of glass. So that you're feeling that this is more of an entry rather than an alleyway, bring you in. Stairway, elevators, everything required to get up into the building. Um, we also, uh, thought maybe the, if these retail spaces may access, uh, this courtyard space as well. That being said, we also provide entrance to the building, uh, on Main Street, uh, at the first floor. Uh, all retail on the first, parking in the rear, uh, then we go to the existing second floor, and as you mentioned, Brian. Currently, many years ago, was a furniture store, it's all warehouse, uh, space up there now, wide open. And the only second story is on the far right, the, our left is only a one-story. Uh, in the rear left is actually a three-story. Uh, but we took that second floor and you can see populated it, excuse me, pretty drastically, uh, with a lot of information. Uh, here we have the, um, sixteen units, um, most of them one-story, most of them one-bedroom. Um, most of them facing, uh, good, based on Main Street, providing, uh, bays, lots of light views of Main Street. Three stairwells for egress, also providing at this level, uh, an exterior terrace for the tenants available to everyone. Um, and then that's that open courtyard below, in the back, uh, because this is a three-story building. Um, we're making these units, um, these four units two-story, so the living areas on the second floor. And when you go to the third floor. Come on. Up. When you go to the third. It's coming.
Well, you need Steve or Andrew.
I do. Where are they? I know where they are. There we go, um, here, here we're on the third floor and you can see these four units have, um, their two bedrooms and two bathrooms up on the third full level. Uh, so that takes advantage of that whole CMU built back. If we go to the front elevation, this is what is existing. Uh, and here comes our front elevation proposed, much more turn-of-the-century building with. Boston-based double-hung windows, uh, retail on the bottom, area of signage is our entrance in the center. Um, a detailing of the parapet to hide mechanicals, uh, et cetera, up on the roof. Um, and then we went ahead and took a picture of what's there now. Oh, I should have mentioned on the left side of the building, taken about sixteen feet off, uh, to get the right-of-way into the, into the back at twenty-four feet. Uh, Rick had mentioned that a bit too. Uh, here's a proposed, um, streetscape rendering of what the building, uh, potentially could look like. And we were also hoping after our visit to the town council to use the. What's happening with envisioned weight deal and widening of the sidewalks. Uh, outside, um, eating and seating, uh, new, hopefully new trees, maybe new lighting. And picturing that could carry me all the way down to the Santan Dare building.
Yeah, and that's gonna become parallel parking.
Yeah, parking will change.
In front, it's not gonna be angle parking anymore. With the Envision project.
That's right, with the Envision project. We had at the end of the packet, um, we were debating amongst ourselves, the. The color schemes here, we're showing a tan building, uh, black bays, uh, a lot of, uh, fenestration at the lower level. Some gray down in that area, and we just weren't quite sure of the best way to approach the building, so we. Then rendered it, um, with the darker side, still the dark base, um, and how that affects the, the parapet above. And then the final, um, rendering. Um, being light gray, um, different tones down on the bottom and the, the darker bays in between and how the. That is, how the, um, carpet would be detailed, but we, we included this just thinking that it's, it's in our minds still. Not solidified and, um, we thought it would be worth kind of getting out there to the public to talk about, we think the building should look.
Okay.
It covers us, yeah.
And so, you know, with that, with that said, you know, I'd just like to add something about Andreas, so, uh, Andrea, Andrea Cidos, who's. Who's in charge of this project, um, on behalf of his father is, is a significant developer. Um, has an impeccable reputation, I've had the pleasure of working with Andreas over the past ten years on other projects. Not in Wakefield and on a lot of financing, commercial financing that he does. And I think the board is gonna find him a pleasure to deal with, e- e- everything he tells you, he's gonna do, he does it. Um, and he has that reputation in the, in the field. And, um, you know, he's very accommodating and a real pleasure to, to work with, and I think you're gonna find that out through the permitting process. And also, um, through the, um, um, through the construction process, assuming, uh, hopefully that if it gets approved. And then also Scott Fitzpatrick, who is kind of Andreas's right-hand man on construction, is, is extremely knowledgeable. And, um, he's known very well by our building inspector, very well respected by Ben. And, uh, he'll just be, you know, this is a, a unique area to build in, you know, it's, it's downtown and he's the perfect guy to do that, so. We're happy to answer any questions, we know this is the, the first meeting, but, um, have, you know, we'd like to hear your impressions on what you've seen so far.
Thanks Brian, board members?
Peter, what's, what's your thought on making it look like a railroad station?
That's what it looks like, is, are you saying it does look like a railroad station?
Yeah, I, the top cornice makes it look like, almost like the, the building down at. Down, uh, the, you know, remaxes in and all of that, I, I just don't, do you think the cornice works with? Downtown?
I, I do think you need it for this style building, maybe, maybe we've made it too detailed. Maybe there's too many cornices up there, but I think you need something there.
And what, let's see, what's your, why are you going away from brick, or is the dark brick? Or is the dark on the bottom a black brick?
We, we didn't, we have not yet, um, done and rendered it, Rick, we could look at that, for sure.
Well, it just, I, I'm curious if you've looked at any of the historic pictures, maybe. You know, way back when of what this building looked like, and does it make any sense to? Pull that, by the way, I love it, I mean, I, whatever, you know, the fact that it's only two stories. I was picturing we were gonna have to go three or four to get what you needed into it. Um, so the fact that it's just two stories is really nice. Um, a lot of retail still is great, or service, or restaurants, or whatever. Um, and also, just talk to me about how you're coordinating this. And the vision work, I mean, where do we stand, I mean, you, you probably will be years before vision starts. But do they have a real plan of what you can do with the sidewalk here? The trees and all of that, prior to what they're gonna do?
Yeah, we're gonna work with, you know, we're, we're just getting into that Chip, but we're gonna work with Bill Reno on that, just like we did with Santan Dare Bank.
But to me, they, they're not that far, this is more prominent. And what we do, Santan Dare was kind of on the edge, this is right there and in the middle and. Parking bumpouts and all of that, that, you know, was discussed, is that all gonna change with this project?
It's all timing, you know, I mean, you know, th- this, this, the vi- Envision project is based on grant money. Um, and so, you know, the timing of that, the best we can say is that. We, we're gonna, we're gonna work with, with the town on what that Envision process, project is to make sure. That whenever that gets implemented, that it's gonna fit like a glove with us, that we're not, we're not gonna re- redo work, or, or make us like. Not, not fit with that, we're gonna.
Right, so, so that goes back to, you know, other projects that we've tried to tie into that. Um, Bennett Street, you know, trying to do something there with the crosswalks and all that, with the rail-to-trail and. Center Islands and all that, I'm just, this is great and this is gonna really push. This end of, of the town. Um, hopefully motivate them to keep moving and. So I, I've just, really how it all blends together is interesting.
I think Chip, it might be at some point during this permitting process, you, you, you know. A respectfully suggested, maybe you wanna ask Bill Reno to come to a meeting.
Right, oh, I think we would have.
Remember, if you remember, you did that with Santan Dare, he actually came to the meeting. And he was talking about how, you know, how he saw it and, and he helped condition that project to make sure it was gonna be in sync with everything that happened with Envision.
I had, I have had a conversation with, uh, with Ri- uh, with, uh, with Rick on that. Uh, particularly more recently because of a interface with Santan Dare. And about what we can do, do here, he's very much in league with doing something ahead of time, basically. And getting the trees and other things taken care of, now down there, we had trouble with the trees, because when they moved the sidewalk out. Basically, they ended up building over the top of some of the utilities, so you couldn't put trees in, in that particular area, basically. But I also just, historically, um, the building that's, uh, three thirty-seven. Um, Main Street, which is the one they wanna put the big sign on the side of, historically, it looked like this, but another story higher. There's a whole bunch of, there's a whole bunch of bills, building historically, that had big cornices and just like this, and were wood. So this fits in historically in the neighborhood, I can send out slew of pictures, basically, of. Different things in town, even the Richardson Building, which is brick, the cornice on the top of that Richardson Building is just exactly like this, so. This historical reasoning to do this, even in wood.
And the other question I had is, do we think Hartz is gonna, that the. Hardware store is gonna ever do the facelift they came in front of us?
Uh, yeah, I've had the conversation with Doug, um, they, they were.
Rails, guys, guys, rails, we're not talking.
This is rails, it's how it all ties together, Dave.
What does Hartz have to do with this?
Because it's a block away.
Alright, well, I was hoping to get out there before midnight, okay, go ahead.
Well, I'll just give you the quick thing, is he got, he got stuck basically on handicap issues. And market conditions, so the last conversation I had, he's actually, he is moving ahead, period.
Okay.
Quick.
Thank you. Anything else, board members?
Love it.
Yep. Um, we've received just today correspondence from the engineering department, Brian, you'll probably wanna look at that letter.
Yeah, Gail, Gail was kind enough to send it and I.
Okay, okay, lots of comments and, yeah, probably some usual stuff, but in case there's anything particular there, same with the fire department. Their letter came in a couple weeks ago, so. Um, other than that, that's what we received for correspondence. Obviously, the first of several meetings here, um, we'll get into more details. As we go along, but, uh, any member of the public who wishes to ask a question or make a comment at this time, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, we'll close with the public testimony for the evening. So two weeks, Brian, we'll pick it up and get into a little more detail.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is, I, 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 there's not a lot, there's not a lot of discussion on site. Is that, you know, it's, it is what it is, it's the site, um, we're happy to discuss that, but I think we should dive into architectural, cause I think that's where the rubber hits the road on this.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
You already asked for public?
I just did, there was none.
None, I move that we continue this tape on twenty-sixth.
Any discussion? And regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
You can vote yes, alright, thanks Brian, um, and team, uh, looking forward to more discussions in a couple weeks.
Great.
Alright, our last new hearing of the evening, twenty-three dash seventy-three and seventy-four, three thirty-five Washington Street LLC. At six-ten to six-fourteen North Avenue.
Right. Um, Peter, is Peter still sharing the screen, is it me?
Actually, probably Peter.
Yeah, thanks.
It's gone.
Great.
Sorry about that.
It's alright, we'll let it slide this time. Yeah. Um, so, uh, thank you Mister Chair, for the record, um, Brian McGrail on behalf of, uh, three thirty-five Washington Street LLC. Um, this is, uh, property situated at six-ten dash six fifteen North Avenue. Um, and it's the, uh, Albrecht, um, Auto Dealership, it's the Albrecht, uh, GMC Buick. And with me tonight is Tim Williams, who's taken the liberty to take over the screen from Alan A. Major, who was our site civil. Uh, James Milwaukee is here also, James is our architect. And Mike, uh, Trasuik is here, who is a representative of Albrecht Automotive. Um, this is, um, I'm gonna kinda, um, Tim, uh, Tim, uh, do you kinda wanna take over and kind of familiarize the site? Let me just set the table real quick, uh, for the board, because this is a pretty straightforward application. Um, this is a legal non-conforming use on the property, it's in the business district. Um, this auto dealership was created prior to special permits being required for automotive, um, sales and leasing. Um, so it goes way back to the McManus's, when it was McManus Ford and Mazda. And now, now Albrecht, uh, owns this, owns this property and has, uh, GMC and Buick. So it's a legal non-conforming use, we're looking to make some, what we deem to be minimal changes to the building. Which requires a finding, uh, under the bylaw. Um, there's also a, as Jim McBane knows, th- there's more sign variances for this site than I can count. Uh, Gail was kind enough to send me, send me them, you don't even know what they're for, there's so many of them, I mean, uh. Because they go back and they talk about a Mazda sign and a. I mean, uh, because they go back and they talk about a Mazda sign and a Volvo sign and. And a Ford sign, which, you know, they're long gone, so what we're looking to do is. You know, basically, as you're, as you, uh, uh, I'm sure are aware GMC has their branding. That they require of the dealership, so we're looking to, in, in conjunction with the architectural faceless of, of the building in the addition. Is to meet the branding of JMC, GMC, um, and Buick. General Motors and to update the signs, and as part of that, we've requested a sign variance, which. However, you look at the bylaw, my suggestion on that, I, you know, I'd like to get through the finding aspect of this, present the signage to the board. To make sure that you're in general, uh, comfort with it, and then, um. Respectfully ask you to appoint Jim McBane to work with me on that before the next meeting. So we can present the board the relief that's needed, instead of sitting here till one in the morning, uh, for Jim and I to try to figure that out. Um, if, if he's appointed, then I can work that out with him. So, but that's for a, a little bit later in the meeting, uh, I guess to start, uh, Tim, if you could kinda give the footnote version of the site. Um, and what we're looking to, and where we're looking to put these little changes to the building and then.
Sure, I can do that, Brian, uh, for the record, Tim Williams and Alan are major associates. And essentially, the, um. The subject site is three point six acres, uh, located in the, uh, business district. But we do abut the residential district, which plays into the zoning setbacks, um. What's currently proposed is essentially the infilling of, uh, two canopy areas on either side. Of the main entrance, as well as improvements to what is the, essentially the car drop off area. So the site today has, um, eighty-seven existing parking spaces. And based on the proposed and existing site uses, that, none of that's changing, eighty-seven spaces are required. In the proposed condition, we'll have a hundred spaces provided. Uh, the floor area out there today is about thirty-four thousand square feet with a twenty-four thousand square foot footprint. These are round numbers, the floor area under the proposed condition will be thirty-six thousand square feet. With a little over twenty-six thousand square feet of, uh, of footprint, so. Essentially, the site remains, uh, in conformance with zoning. Um, because we abut a single residential district. When would normally be zero setbacks, we now have fifteen setbacks. Um, but the site still, the building still remains in conformance. Um, what we're gonna essentially redo is re-stripe the, the existing parking spots, um, on the northern side of the site. Reconfigure the parking around the building and add a new row of parking, which. They're all nine by eighteen with twenty-four foot wide drive aisles, and that gets us to the hundred. Parking spaces that are proposed. Um, the, the architectures are included in the plan set, but essentially, it, it's just infilling. The, the two areas that are currently canopy space. Right here, so this canopy will get infilled, we will just have. Minor site work utility wise, related to the relocation of this hydrant to get it out. From against the, the back of the build, uh, the front of the building, and then in the back. Um, we'll be filling in that canopy area as well with new building.
Right, uh, Tim, just, uh, a point, a, a single residence, uh, a butter is a wetland, pretty much, right? I mean, so.
Yeah, if I go back to the, the, um.
You can see it there.
The aerial, there is a, this is primarily wetlands, now Brian and I did meet. Informally with Bill Renault and, uh, the Conservation Commission. Agent and discussed the need to file with the Conservation Commission, and they didn't feel there was a need. Cuz we're not changing anything out here, the payment remains, uh, the limits of payment remain the same. It's really just restriping the parking lot, uh, to accommodate the uses of the building. And then the remaining paved spaces will be for the, uh, display of vehicles.
Yeah, and they Concom sent a memo to that effect. So, but I just wanted to point that we bought a residential district, but we really don't have any residential houses.
Correct, correct, uh, the parking was laid out, so we're, you know, we don't have to re relocate any utility poles, any site lighting. Um, there is. As, as Brian mentioned, that the, there's a signage package. Right now, up in the far upper corner is the, the existing pylon sign out there, um. They would like to. Replace that pylon sign with a new sign, and I know Brian mentioned that the signage package is a, a whole nother can of worms, so.
I'm gonna get into that, Tim, you don't have to.
Yeah.
Um, can you go to the site plan, uh, Tim, that will, that shows the existing conditions, so we can just kinda point out to the board? Where these infills are, cuz they were on there.
Sure. I'll zoom in on this, so really, this is overhang area.
That gets, Jim, we can't, uh, Tim, we can't see your cursor, I don't know why, can anyone else?
No.
Alright.
An aerial photo, not a site.
Yeah, we're just seeing the aerial photo.
Oh, you are, okay, let me stop sharing and reshare then, something, something's going on. I apologize.
That's okay.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so I was going through the site plan, apparently guys didn't see any of it, right? Is that correct, Brian?
We were looking at, we were looking at the, uh, the overview, but it, it, it kinda worked.
Okay, alright, so essentially what we're doing is we're infilling these, these overhangs. Um, right here in this open space, as I mentioned, there's a hydrant right here that's gonna be relocated. But at the end of the day, um, these overhangs get filled in. That's where we get the addition, the additional two thousand, three thousand square feet of, uh, of floor area and footprint. And then this drop off area, um. Is gonna get reconfigured as well, and that.
There's a little, there's a little add-on over there, too.
Yeah, and so essentially, that's where we'll put the handicap spots. Um, as I mentioned, and of course, nobody saw it, but restriping the parking lot. Uh, in and around the building, um, these spaces exist, we're just gonna bring them into conformance, nine by eighteen. We did add fifteen spaces here, again, as I mentioned, they're configured around existing utility poles, which won't change. Um, new stop bar at the, uh. Egress point out on North, North Ave, and, um. And then again, this kinda dictates, shows where we're gonna be infilling, um, the existing overhangs. Um, and if I can go back to the canopy sign. Here's the canopy, the existing pylon sign that exists today is gonna be replaced in kind. With, um, with a new pylon sign, and as, as Brian mentioned, um, you guys will discuss that. So, I apologize, I wasn't sharing my screen properly, but.
That's fine, so I'm gonna, if, if.
This is the layout.
Yep, and now if you can let me share my screen, Tim, for a minute.
Sure.
You'd stop sharing, cuz James, uh, was kind enough to send me. This will be, I think, helpful to the board, to kinda give an idea of what's being proposed here. Okay. So, this is kind of a, this is a existing conditions of what, what that building looks like now. Well, that, you know, I mean, I think the sob sign's gone, but there's all temporary signage up there at this point. Uh, and so you can put that in your memory bank. And. This is what. The end product. Signage, the signage is changing a little bit on this, which I'll get into, but this is, this gives you a good idea of, of the building. This is the building. And this is not the front of the building, this is facing, this is the side facing one twenty-eight. This side here is facing North Avenue. And again, th- this is a rendering of the building, but the signage we're proposing, which I'll get into, has changed a little bit. Pretty similar, but there's like a GMC Buick on this side that they, that has been added. So you can see there's really a facelift, pretty significant facelift happening to this long overdue. So before I get into signage, Mr. Chair, any questions that the, uh, board might have as far as the, you know, the, the changes that Tim is proposing on the site and the building?
None for me, board members.
Brian, is there signage, um, you noted there's, uh, North Avenue and towards the highway. Is it signage on the other side?
Yeah, I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you the signage right now after the building, I'm gonna bring that up. But you, are you talking like facing towards downtown Wakefield, Jim?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No need for it.
Alright.
Yep. Hey.
Okay.
So this is, this is the signage, um, package, and this kind of, this is kind of a key plan, so. Again, this is the side of the building facing one twenty-eight. And you saw this sign on that build, on that side of the building, they also have a certified service, which is a black light up sign right here. And then they had, they already had the Albrecht sign, and what you saw in the rendering was they had an Albrecht sign over here. And they wanna add a, a Buick and GMC side, a sign obviously facing, um, North Avenue. They also have a, a pylon sign. Um, these signs are, you know, uh, are really, I think, pretty, you know, they're not big signs, I mean, you know, fourteen. You know, this is the side facing the highway, fourteen feet. But, you know, just over fourteen square feet. Um, this sign, uh, then you go down, and this is the Buick sign on this side. They did the calculations really incorrectly here, and this is stuff that Jim and I will have to fine tune. Um, because th- they need to measure the whole box, they didn't do that here, they did it. Here, it's like three point four by, by twelve feet. So, so that, that needs to be kind of corrected as far as the calculation goes. Um, and then the certified sign is they did that correct, because they, even though it's independent letters. They have the whole thing, and again, that's only sixteen inches high, thirteen feet long, only a total of eighteen point two five square feet. Um, I think the main variances here are gonna deal with. You know, however, um, when Jim and I look at the bylaw, how they get classified, if they're, if they're building signs or accessory signs. My initial thought, Jim, is maybe the Albrecht sign would be a building sign, and then the, the branding of Buick and GMC would be an accessory sign. But we can talk about that. Because the bylaws, you know, you know how the bylaw is, especially the old bylaw. Um, and then this is the, um, Albrecht, this is the front. Facing North Ave, so you have the Albrecht sign there, again. Only fourteen square feet. And then they wanna put the Buick and the GMC, which I think actually balances off the building. All these signs are proposed to be internally lit, which is allowed in this district, because it's not the, um. It's not the special permit, uh, sign overlay district. Um, and then this is, you know, they give the individual specs on each sign, I'm not gonna board the, uh. Uh, bore the board with that at this point. And then this is the freestanding sign, Tim has set it back from the required, uh, setback from the street. It meets the height and the size requirement, because we, our building is over a hundred feet back from the street. And the, um, and it's under fifty square feet. So that meets the requirement, I think it's kinda tasteful, the black sign with just the letters that light up. So that, that is our, our package. Happy to take any comments the board might have on signs, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, board members.
Do you need a motion to let Jim work with Brian to figure out all the variances?
Yeah, yeah, just, um, just general comments on the building, I mean, it, yeah, it needs facelift, this looks good, right? It's totally in support of that, you can. Get behind that, but yeah, let's just work out the sign details and, uh. So we know exactly what we're, what kind of relief is required and. Sounds like that's really the main thing that needs to be resolved, right?
Correct.
Um, okay. But we can open up, I don't know if there's members of the public who wish to ask a comment or question. Please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, we'll close with the public testimony. So yeah, a motion to, um, Jim, if you're willing and able to do so. Um, work with Brian to, to firm up the, the sign details here. Uh, we'll do a motion on that and then a motion to continue. If you want two weeks, Brian?
Yeah, I think that'll be fine.
Okay.
I move that we, uh, allow. Jim McBane, if willing, to work with Brian offline, to come up with all the variances. And special permits needed for signage on this property as described to us this evening. And to continue the meeting till April twenty-sixth meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you, any discussion? Alright, so I'm in favor, Chip?
Yep.
Joe?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yep.
Greg?
Yep.
And I vote yes, okay. Alright, thanks, Brian, uh, and Jim for the presentation. We'll talk again in two weeks.
Right.
Brian, can, Brian, can you send me the electronic files?
Yep, I'll send it to you tonight.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright, thank you, actually, send them to, send them to Gail, please, so that we all have them.
Yep.
I mean, we just have the, what's in the record, but yeah, I always like to get copies electronically, and then we'll. See what changes.
Alright, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, we have two other matters that we didn't take up front this time around, but, um. Brian, they were yours anyway, right?
So, yeah, yeah.
Um, so two hundred, uh, four hundred Guanapowit, uh, CCF discussed. The construction management plan, which you did send us in advance.
Correct, yeah. So, uh, Matt D'Amico is back again.
Can't stay away.
Can't stay away, uh, and Matt, who is with us tonight?
Uh, Pat Riordan from Callan Construction Managers.
Great, okay, great, so, so, uh, I, I think this is pretty straightforward, um, but, um, we have a, um. As you know, from our modification, CCNF is getting ready to, getting ready to mobilize. Um, and one of the requirements is that we need a construction management plan approved by the chair and or designated board members. Um, and we had a very detailed meeting with town department heads, police, fire, town administrator, uh, conservation. For the health, um, basically, everybody was there, and Chairman Hatfield was kind enough to, uh, participate in that. Um, and at that meeting, there were some requests from the, the various parties that were involved to modify our construction plan that we presented. Which we've done, um, and, um. We wanted to present it to your board, because it requires the approval of your chair and our board, so. Obviously, uh, the chair wanted, wanted his entire board to kinda see this. Um, and have the opportunity to comment before it gets etched in stone. So, I'm gonna hand it over to you, Matt, for efficiency purposes, and. Maybe you and Pat can go through this as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Sounds good, um, so I'm just gonna share my screen here, we have a three-page, uh, plan that goes over all the pieces of this. Um, and I'll have Pat, you know, we're gonna talk about this from the perspective of phasing, uh, and site management, and I'll have Pat walk. Through that and also introduce himself, but I will, uh, I'll shut up now and, and over the pad. Can you guys see the, uh, the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you all, this is, uh, my name is Pat Riordan, I'm the project manager for Callan Hand Managers, um. Will be, um, overseeing and constructing the new project as well as the demo and abatement of the existing.
Matt, can you blow that up a little bit? Good, right there, yeah.
Okay, so just stop if you have any questions, of course, so this is, um, what you're looking at here is the, um. One of three pages, this is the actual building site, so to speak, the building pad. Um, what this shows here is not the existing building that will be, um, gone, as you all know. And this construction management plan takes into account, not just, um, uh, the security of the site, but how we, we plan on, uh. Managing and, and moving around in, in phase of. So, um, starting on the front, I'm sorry, the bottom right. Actually, Matt, if you wouldn't mind, you wanna go to the, um, the, the other page that starts, oh, um, from the playground on Lowell Street. And comes down to the site. Okay. Thank you, so, um. When we met, ooh, jeez, a few months ago, um, both police and fire departments were concerned with public safety, um. I'm familiar with the area, I used to actually work at the, the dealership that, uh, you guys were just talking about. You know, very familiar, um, with all the people that walk around the, around the park, so. We decided, uh, Matt, you might wanna zoom in on the bottom, if you could, where the playground is. Um. So, the, the, the entire road, the loop road, as I call it, that, um, comes from, um, Lowell Street. And continues off to North Road on North Ave, I'm sorry. We will be using this entrance, um, solely for all construction purposes, um. On the other end, we'll get to that in the other page, but we're gonna be using this, this, um, end alone. And one of the items is the, um, safety for pedestrians and the general public, so what we are proposing here. Is, I know it's a little hard to see, but the sidewalk on the upper portion of, of, uh, Quanapower Parkway. Um, yeah, right where your cursor is, Matt, you go down to the crosswalk, that yellow. Uh, indicates a temporary crosswalk. So the, the sidewalks will remain open. On that side, so you get to that sidewalk, the sidewalk will be closed at that point. There'll be a, uh. I'll, I'll put a crosswalk in, there'll be signage of all types that you can see here. That will, uh, direct people from, say, the hot dog guy, uh, can come walk down, go over to the parking lot to the playground and then onward to, um. The sidewalk on the lakeside. That sidewalk will remain open. But one thing we're going to do after, um, hearing the concerns, um, from. Um, both fire and police is, um, as you can see in the photo up top, we're going to put. A continuous row of, um, Jersey barriers, concrete barriers. Um, it's around eight hundred feet long that will start roughly right where the playground is, where that crosswalk is. Will continue, um, all the way down to where. The sidewalk veers off towards the lake. Um, those will be brand new Jersey barriers, and I'll also have a four foot scrimmed fence on top of that, just to. Kind of keep it nice and neat and, um. Now orderly, lack of a better term. So the, uh, again, the construction access to and from the, um, the, um, Lowell Street will come down this road here. Um, the signage, uh, a lot of it is basically, uh, basic construction signage that you would see on any, uh, project like this, but also a bunch of little signs that would just. Um, hopefully help, uh, make it real obvious on where, where, where to walk in, and, um, we'd be, be very clear for, for everyone. Um, once we get down here, you see the green sidewalk on the left-hand side where Matt's cursor is, that starts to veer, you know, into. Um, the front edge of the lake. I'm going to bring the Jersey barriers down just beyond that. And then that sidewalk, um, from there forward will be, will be closed. So, um, in a nutshell, that's how we, uh, plan on, um, treating. The parkway from Lowell Street into the building, um, location. The, um, second plan or the plan we were at before, that is the, um. That is the, the building site. And the colors that you see represent phases. So it's a very busy plan. But, um, I hopefully I can explain it pretty well. So. If you look down, um, on the lower left, that's building one. It looks like two buildings, but that is one building. It has a little pedestrian bridge in between. That'll be the first occupancy phase. Second phase is the large building behind it in the yellow. It'll be the majority of that building up to the purple, um, section. And then including the entire precast parking garage, which has the zigzag motion. And that just represents the path of. On the travel path to the crane that will be in there setting the precast parking garage. Phase three is the purple. Um, which is the balance of building three, and then the final phase will be, um, building three down below. So, and then I'll explain what's going on there on the left. So, um, it looks like we plan on, uh, mobilizing to the sites. That, that is Callahan will be mobilizing to the site on May first. Um, really, the initial steps here, um, is the abatement and demolition of the existing structure. Um, the abatement is a pretty, um, simple operation. It'll be inside the building, uh, no noise, n- nothing like that. It's just basically the guys taking care of the, um. The stuff inside the building. There'll be minimal trucking that'll take around. Um, on six weeks. While that's happening. Um, I'm going to start with the, uh, installation of the perimeter, um. Um, security fence or construction fencing. It's hard to see here without zooming in, but. Again, the, 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 the cut through, as you know, will be, um, abandoned. That road will always be passable for emergency vehicles or municipality vehicles. But the construction fence. Will. Be on the backside of the curb along the access road, all the way around the property. And then right in the bottom, you can see the property line where the colors, you know. Uh, I'll go from, you know, color to white. That'll be the circumference of the, wh- wh- of the area that will be. Under, um. Uh, construction fencing, six foot tall, all driven posts. Um, including top rails, so these things don't blow over. It'll be fully scrimmed. Meaning all the fence will have kind of a semi-transparent black. Uh, construction screen. Um, on the file, and, and back where the gate is, um, just so y'all know, um, talked with the fire department, uh, a couple, um, times. On how they would like to see the gates and how they would access the site on off hours and. They've agreed to, um, the, the gates should be locked on off hours, but there'll be a Knox box at each gate. That will either have a key or a combination that, uh, any in all municipal. Uh, employees, um, can have, whether it be the light power department or, um, emergency vehicles. Um, the second gate. Will be on the far left of the project as you're kind of leaving the building area and heading down Quanapower Parkway, um, towards North Ave. Um, the overlay you see there with the photo is just to kind of illustrate to our butter that we will be, um. Putting a gate where, where it's shown. Um, they had concerns, these are the folks that, um, own and occupy one hundred Quanapowit that if. For any reason, a truck or a car or a tractor trailer came down that road. They'd have an opportunity, uh, ability to do a three-point turn, even with a tractor trailer and get out. So they didn't want any, um, kind of, uh, that kind of turning, turnaround action, uh, in their parking lot, which we understand and. We altered that to, um, appease them there. As far as, um, anything else in the construction management plan goes, um, as far as this plan without going to the final plan, it's, it's pretty straightforward. The stuff you're looking at here, I'm showing is. Um, crane locations. And lift locations. So the, um, the precast parking garage will be erected by, uh, a fairly large crawler crane. That crane will sit within the footprint of the garage and kind of zigzag its way out. The other crane locations that you see around all the buildings, uh, um, you know, smaller. You know, kind of rubber tire truck, you know, uh, cranes that would, uh, move as the construction moved. So as we build, um, the crane will stay stable until it goes to the next spot. And it has all the, um. Uh, the travel paths kind of indicated there all along the building. Uh, on the far right in the yellow area, um, that parking lot is where I, um. Proposed staging a, uh, double wide construction trailer for the construction crew as well as. Uh, meetings with the client. We will not be putting that big trailer there until we, uh, finish with demo. Um, what I have being delivered to the site on the, uh, second week in May is a small twenty-foot ground level. Container box trailer. We'll have a Tampa Electric Service that permit's been pulled with Dave Paulson. That will, uh, energize that trailer for the site superintendent to, to work out of. Um, and when the time comes, that small trailer will be moved and replaced with a, uh, sixty-foot-long double-wide construction trailer, typical what you've seen on most jobs. You know, I'm just kind of showing where the, uh, you know, some portable toilets will be staged, uh, dumpsters. That's all, those all move around. We will have, um. Depending on the amount of people there. We have a rule, we have, uh, quite a, a number of toilets cleaned three times a week. So there'll be, there'll be staged all around on the. As far as that left-hand, um, detail goes. Um, okay, just explain that. I'm sorry, Matt, if you want to go to the, the final page that shows from that point, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to make one quick note on the phasing so that. Uh, you'll see the building three, the rear building here is phased in two parts. So we have a phased occupancy plan. That was, uh, prepared by Code Red Consultants, uh, in concert with Callahan. And, uh, we've submitted that to the fire chief. Uh, and the building inspector, and we have a meeting with them, uh, in the first week of May. To go through it, uh, but it's, uh, it's a plan that outlines how our phased approach, uh, of opening this project meets code. Uh, and meets the concerns, some of the concerns we've talked about with them. Uh, about a phased occupancy. So I just wanted to make note of that, that's something that they're. Uh, they continue the review.
Hey, Matt. Um, the demolition of the existing building. The trucks are coming in on the right and going out on the left.
The trucks are coming, so the trucks are coming in on the right, uh, and they're also going out. Towards Lowell Street as well.
Uh, so it is. Um, uh, is dust control and the rest basically part of the plan?
Yeah, so at both. At both construction gates, even though the, the, uh, North Ave side is really for. Emergency only, we'll have dust control measures. Uh, we have a, i- in our, in our civil plans, we have, um, the details for that as well.
Are, are you sorting the debris?
If I can take that, um. So what the, the plan is, is the, a lot of the, the stuff that's inside the building obviously gets hauled away and. Salved, scrapped, disposed of. The actual structure itself, we will be pulverizing and crushing on site. And using that crushed concrete as, um, fill. You know, any of the rebar and so forth would obviously be, would be scrapped, but we'll be. We'll be, um, pulverizing the concrete on site. And, um, the, the company we're using, JDC Demo is. Union operation. Big, they, you know. All over the, um, all over the area. They have giant misting machines, um. They, they're, they're pros. They're, they're not a fly-by-night company. So dust control is, is a huge concern as well as. Street sweeping and what have you, but that is something that is all, um, taken into account with their contract.
So Jim, just a, another note there. So there, there's a. Probably a little bit too much in the weeds, but there's a beneficial use determination that we got from DEP. Uh, which, what, we basically went through a whole program of testing all the concrete in the existing building. Um, and, and they, you know, and environmental judgments made by DEP. That, you know, crushing and reusing the concrete, uh, makes sense for this site. Uh, which really means that, that the typical demo traffic that you would have, which would be tons and tons of truckloads. Will be able to avoid, will also be able to avoid a lot of that on the filling side when we get to it as well.
Thanks.
Next sheet, Matt?
Yes, please.
Can I ask a quick question before you go too far?
Absolutely.
Um, the scrim that you're putting on the fence, I'm assuming that's just a straight black, no advertising. No Callahan every twenty feet.
Um, say Callahan on it.
Yeah, how many times?
Uh, well, each, each roll. So it all, it all does. It'd be like a. Green and black. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
I am, and I think it looks horrible everywhere. I mean, it's just way too much signage. I mean, that's. You know, you get a site sign, you don't get five hundred feet of it. I don't know if that's. I don't know where that falls under the. The description, but. I'm a little concerned about the billboard along. The entire property on all four sides. That screams Callahan. I don't know how many times you'd have your name. Up around everything. At that.
Well, um, it doesn't have to be. Branded. All of our scrim is branded. If, um, that became an issue, I would hate for that to be the one thing that was a thorn in anyone's side.
Well, I don't know how other people feel about it. I've just seen a lot of your sites. And I knew they were all branded, but. That's a lot of branding. I think usually we have. Um, you know, you'd have your typical. Large site. Sign with architect and all of that at. One of the entrances, but. I don't know how other people feel about that. If it's not an issue, then. I'll let it go, but it seems like a lot to me.
I, and I'm with you because here we are, people are walking along the lake and all they're going to see is this, as opposed to the beauty of the lake. It shouldn't be something distracting like that.
Well, it. It would, it, are you saying the people walking along the pathway along the lake? Cause we would, we, there would, the, the, the signage, I, I mean, not the signage, the fences. In, in border that.
Well, I, 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 I'm with Chip on this.
I, I think we can, we can come up with a solution that limits it and we'll. There's got to be something, and I think it's important that folks know who the construction manager is.
Oh, I, I, I have no problem with a site sign. You know, four by eight, five by ten, whatever you want, that lists everything. Picture of the building, all of that. I don't think you need nine thousand feet of it, though.
I, I hear, I hear you. We'll, we'll, we'll work out a solution that makes sense.
Okay. Um, yeah, Matt, if you can go to the North Ave side. So this here, um. Like I said, we, we have no intentions of using this road for construction, um, but. With it being closed down, people are accustomed to it being, um, a throughway. So I, I, I think the, the first, um. Step here would be to put some sign as like you see on the left-hand sign that would be, make it very clear that. Um, A, no construction traffic. We don't want, um, our, our vehicles. That, at all, whether it be cars, pickup trucks, or, or trailer loads, or trailer dumps, um, going down this road. So we'd like to, um. Put the proper signs up there that would, um, uh, uh, eliminate someone going down and finding it to be a dead end. As well as, uh, making it clear that, uh, construction traffic, uh, would. Come through the North Ave, I'm sorry, the Lowell Street side, and that would be information that is. In every contract of every, um, vendor and supplier that would be coming to the site. Um, short, short of that, it would just, um, be more the same kind of signage that we have on all of the gates, um. That's right on the fence, um, just as far as like no trespassing and, and kind of rules, hard hat, um, area, uh, please visit the trailer. Um, and so forth. So this site is a little less, um. Not complicated as far as the CMP goes, um. But more or less had to do with, um, um, minimizing, uh, the construction traffic in both entrances.
Yeah, so just to give a little bit of context behind this conversation as well, um, it's one of the bigger parts of this construction management plan. So we went into this with the desire to, to shut down that through traffic. During the majority of the construction, really from a site safety and site management perspective. We were getting concerns from our carriers, and it's, it's really just, it, it's, wouldn't be a good condition. So we, you know, we proposed that to, uh, the department heads. I know that, um. We, we received positive feedback and, and kind of a shared understanding that from a, just a. You know, safety perspective, that it made sense to go this route. Uh, the way that this road is, there's kind of a weird nuance to this road. It's. It's a private parkway on, on public lands, um. So the part, there's three parties that, you know, as you know, it's us. Our butter and that vacant, uh, piece of land over by North Ave. That have an agreement that manages all of this. Um, so in, in working out the details of how that parkway was going to get managed, um. You know. A hundred Quanapowit, uh, RJ Kelly was interested. In, you know, limiting construction traffic in front of their office. They, of course, want this to continue to be a viable. Office, and they don't want, you know, years of construction going in front of their, their site. Um, so the agreement, uh, that they were, you know, that all parties, and, and as it relates to the REA were agreeable to. Um, was, uh, what was this approach here?
So, so Matt, i- is this not an exit route?
It's a, it's not an exit route for construction traffic, uh, but.
So, so we, we talked about. Traffic at Lowell Street. For the project once it's done. And. That's difficult, that end is difficult. I can't see. Traffic coming in from that. I can see traffic coming in off one twenty in. But when they've got to go out and get back on one twenty eight. Then on Lowell Street, they turn it into a bloody mess.
Yeah, so we, we discussed with the chiefs that, you know, on, on, on days with higher construction traffic. That we would, that we would, uh, do details out there. Um, as, as a, a means of managing that.
Yeah, they're going to require details too.
You, you got a, I, I mean, I've stationed out there when we're doing cumbreling up there, just to watch the traffic at certain times. It is horrendous. Basically, at certain times, and they come, they bypass one twenty eight around by coming up Lowell Street. And, and, and then get on one twenty eight at this location. And it is horrendous, and the same thing in the evening, basically. So there are definitely. And it is horrendous and the same thing in the evening, basically. So there are definitely hours. When it is horrendous and you're only gonna make it worse in my mind.
Well, that's why the police chief Jim is gonna require details.
Good luck. They'll be parked all the way down the traffic lights.
I mean, that's what they wanted to come out.
They'll, they'll change that plan after a while.
We'll see. Let's keep going.
Uh, well, that was a kind of general overlay. I'm not sure if there's any questions I could, um, I could ask.
Uh, Matt, you mentioned surveillance cameras, right?
Yeah, so at, at a very, very, very minimum, we're gonna have a, a fully, uh, surveyed, surveyed, uh. Property with cameras throughout. Um, we also, you know, may, depending on a few things, may have onsite security. But. We'll definitely have, uh, visual surveillance throughout.
Police chief requested that.
Uh, another note was that, you know, on, on high traffic. Uh, you know, lake days such as the Fourth of July, uh, that we would, that we would have. Uh, security detail out there. That was a request made by the chief as well, uh, that we were more than amenable to, to do.
Yeah, like when people come for the fireworks and nobody's wandering into the construction site.
Um, Matt, real quick, uh, this is gonna be an all wood building. Is it gonna be temporary sprinkler as they're building it?
I, I will defer the path. It's, it depends on the phase, uh, of, of when it's.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Joseph, I didn't, I didn't fully hear the question.
Do you guys plan on doing like a temporary sprinkler system as it's being built since it's all wood? I, I know you've guys done that in the past on other buildings.
Um, not in this case, but it, what we, um, are proposing with the Code Red Plan is during, um. Building three will propose to have two phased occupancies. So when the construction, uh, when the, when the first phase gets occupied, the second phase, although still under construction in the finishing stages. That'll be fully sprinkled even while we're finishing the job. As a condition of, um, the occupancy, but there's no, there's no, um, sprinklers that'll be in place during construction. Um, typically they're not turned on and functioning until the, the very end.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I would look for as far as a construction management plan too, and I don't look for the answer now. But as you start going for occupancy, I know we have to come up with an owner's, uh. With a usage, uh, that we're doing per occupancy. I'd also like to know at that point. How access and parking and all that is gonna work as you start this phased occupancy?
Sure.
Um, you know, not, not tonight, when, as you come closer looking for occupancy.
Sure, but just quickly, what, once phase one, the green area is occupied, the Lowell Street side. Uh, I keep getting confused. The north ab side will be open and that'll be for the general public and that'll be for the tenants and people. That, that live in that phase. The construction access will remain on the, um.
But you're potentially not gonna have enough parking for that phase. There's a lot of questions, but. Cause you don't have enough parking spaces if you happen to get full occupancy there and all of that, so. So a lot of questions to how that all works once you start looking for occupancy.
Yeah, this, this, this whole phasing plan is actually done to be zoning compliant. So we will, that area in green that's shown, it does have enough parking to meet the zoning requirements for, for that phase. With the exception of, yeah, with the exception of, of the restaurant, which we're specifying in the phased occupancy plan. That we would not seek certificate of occupancy for the restaurant until phase two is complete. Uh, which would, you know, phase two includes our precast garage, so we're gonna have more than enough parking at that point.
Once that happens, yeah, I just don't see that you have enough for phase one, but that's okay, maybe you do.
Yeah, there's a hun- we have a hundred and, hundred and one or a hundred and two. I forgot the number off the top of my head, but that's, uh, that's part of the phased occupancy plan that.
In front of the building? You have a hundred and two spaces?
You see the light blue area there, uh, Chip?
Oh, okay. All right, I was looking at just the green.
Yeah, so that light blue area, I, it during construction, I'm staging in that area. Okay.
I was thinking it was just the green area.
Okay, anything else? All right, Brian, what do we need to do from here?
Well, we, we need your approval on this, Mr. Chair. I don't know if you would want a vote from your board, um. That you approve, assuming you do, but. Yeah, our, our condition requires that, uh, our construction management plan needs to be approved by the chair. Or any other designated, designated members of the board that are designated by you.
Yeah, I would, I would just soon make, make, take a motion so that the board has seen it, the board votes on it, and you've got the board's approval.
Yep.
So board members, any remaining questions on this plan as presented? Again, they'll be, they'll be coming back for occupancy stuff later, but at least with this plan as it's been laid out. This is one of the requirements, one of the conditions. So are you comfortable with this plan?
I am. I mean, the fact that they vetted it with all the town, you know, that's the key to me. And we're gonna be flexible. If there's an issue, you know, we're gonna deal with it with the town officials and come back to you and talk about it.
Yep. And you'll look at an alternative on the. The screening on the s- the fence, maybe some, some alternatives, okay? But other than that, uh, overall plan seems solid. Thanks for presenting. All right.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the construction plan as presented to us tonight by Callahan and. What are you calling yourself? Quanapowit Associates or, uh? Are you still Cabot Cabin and Forbes or LLC or what are we? By Cabot Cabin and Forbes and Callahan this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, party members, Chip?
Yes.
Joe? Jim?
Yes.
Greg? Greg?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate your patience tonight. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, Brian. Six eleven Salem Street, Elite Metal Minor Mods.
Yes.
As quickly as possible.
I, I'm gonna meet you midnight deadline, di- deadline here, um. So, um, I ran this by, uh, Ben, Ben required me to come back with this for six eleven. It's a, it's a very small office building down on the Linfield line. Jim also looked at this and, and suggested we come back. There's some really minor modifications, so I'm gonna ask for an approval. And then we draft a letter in, in this regard, uh, for you. So I'm gonna be very, uh. Concise on this. There's, there's three sides of the building that you need to focus on. Um, let me just open the other one. Hang on a second.
Is this, it's still work being done on the site? Cause it looks like it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's getting some cleaning up.
Yeah, I did. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, hopefully these bolts open. See here.
They added a few windows and moved a few windows on the doorway. No big deal.
Yeah, I understand, but the site itself leaves something to be desired.
Oh, he cleaned it up today. I was down there today, Dave.
Oh, I didn't go by today, but last week. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Hang, hang on a second. Okay, so this is the, you'll, you can see this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the front of the building, okay? Um, and this is already built over here, so you're really focusing on, on this side. And what he's done is he's widened this door, he's widened these doors. They, for building co-purposes. They had to go from two point, two, two foot six doors to three foot doors for a total of six feet. Okay, and then focus on the back, uh, and you'll, you'll see that on the, on the building permit plans, but take a look at these windows. Nothing else has changed except for the doors here. And then on the back of the building, which I'm gonna show you, these go to double windows and this has to turn into a scissor. Stair and this door is not a six-panel door anymore. It's more of a commercial door and it had to be moved over a little bit. For co-purposes, which made the scissor stairs instead of a straight stair. Oh, I can't believe I did that. Can you see that, the new plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, great. So that's, that, these doors got wider. So ta- take a look at this area. I'm gonna go back. That's the only change that's happened there. And then here you see the, the door got pushed over. As I mentioned, these became double windows and this became a scissor stair in the back. I'll go back to that. This is the back of the building, double window. The, it got moved over. We have double windows now. This door has changed to more of a commercial door. This face is one twenty eight anyways, not that it really matters, but. Besides that, these windows all stay the same. You can see them. That's it. And then on this, on this side of the building, um, what's happened is you'll see it's gone from. It's this here. So some windows were added. This faces the Wakefield side of the building. They added windows down below and they, they need, made those double windows above.
Looks better.
That's it.
Okay, any questions or concerns, board members?
Easy peasy.
Mm-hmm. I, I move that we grant what has been presented to us this evening as minor modifications to the project.
Got four minutes.
Second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Boarding membership?
Yep.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Okay, they're minor mods. Look for a memo. Brian will get it filed and, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Eleven fifty-six.
Well, you're done. We're not. We got two more items.
Okay.
Which you can hang around for if you really want to. Yeah, have a, have a good night.
You too.
Um, clerk of board comments. Any updates tonight, board members?
I have one real quick of that, um, the pre-development high school. I went to that and, um, they're gonna be coming to us basically the same thing as, um. The bulk, they're gonna, the building height, three stories and, um, driveway width, so.
All right, well, thanks for going to that, yeah. All right. Did they say when? Did they have an idea?
No, we don't have council yet.
They don't even have a, yeah, they don't even have a.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, yeah, next year.
No, no, the construction starts, construction starts spring of twenty twenty-four. So it's a year of planning, but there'll be a lot of permitting. They'll, we'll, they'll do a lot better job. We as the permanent building committee will do a lot better job informing the Z B A and coming in front of you a couple times. And it won't be a shit show. Excuse me for having that on the.
Okay.
We will have learned our lessons.
Be that as it may, yes.
Yeah. I hope, I hope anyway.
Uh, okay, thanks, Joe. Anything else?
I started attending the, the, what is it? The M B T Communities Working Group started last week. Um, we have meetings every other week, so I have meetings every week for the foreseeable future. Um, no updates yet. We just started getting into it, but, uh, as appropriate, I'll update you guys as we go forward.
Thanks, sounds good, Greg. Uh, my one item is that, uh, for better or worse, Tom and I were reappointed Monday night.
Congratulations.
They did a lot of reappointments and, uh, and, uh, yeah. Um, so, um, I guess we'll get down and get sworn in before May first, Gail, and we'll, we'll be able to continue. Anything else? All right, item six. What's that, Jim?
One minute.
Yep, item six, approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of March.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second as written.
Thank you, Gail.
Good morning. Uh, all right, um, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we adjourn.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Favor? All right.
Bye.
Good night.
Assume me.
Good night.
You're still with us. All right, have a good night. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Oh, good night.
Good night.